Step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper. So that once you write down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies. So that if you cannot use your cellphone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time. Or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster, you want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit. Water bottles and snacks like granola bars. Change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit. Some cash in case you need to use it later. That contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there. Any important documents that your family needs. Copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you. Make a copy, put it in your kit. Chargers for cellphones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy. So that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them too. North Texas is the most disaster prone area in the United States. And I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
You don't have to go to the edges of DFW to find new business opportunities. There's a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access. And it's waiting for you.
Duncanville, the city of champions has opened for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine. And we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs. The city of Duncanville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between. There's a perfect spot waiting in Duncanville. The city has an established community and they are excited about the growth.
We lived here in Duncanville since 2000. We love living here because the communities are amazing. The schools are great and there's always something to do around here. We're excited to see new businesses come to Duncanville. And we're excited to see the city grow for the next 20 years.
What makes this city a great place to have a business is that it's a great place to live. The lower cost of living, fantastic schools, central location and beautiful nature make Duncanville a uniquely special place in DFW.
I opened Roma's in Duncanville, October 26, 2011. The support from the community here in Duncanville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Duncanville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
DFW is growing incredibly fast and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Duncanville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
Hi, this Officer Sluna with the Duncanville Traffic Unit. Just letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Duncanville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the school's lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking and also to put your cellphones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th. And the Duncanville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unintended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Duncanville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with Onward.
As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the backside. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Talia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Duncanville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women Shelter, Genesis Women Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children. Counseling support, because that's really important. Trauma Support Services of North Texas, as well as the Victim Intervention Program by Parkland. They provide those services, as well as immigration. I do assist with the U-Visa process, as well as Bosaik Services. So there's an array of resources and services for victims that are experiencing domestic violence. Victims can contact me through my direct office line. That is 972-707-3832. They can always give me a call. I receive text messages as well, but I'm here to give them support and information.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've got to go shelter in place. When sheltering in place, whether at home, at work, or in public, you always want to shelter inside. Never shelter outdoors. When sheltering in place, there might be an area with a sign that says "shelter area." That means that this area is safe for you to shelter from a tornado. Shelter in a room that is most interior to the building, meaning that there are no windows in the room and none of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor. If you're in the bathroom, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms. If you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you, keep your head protected. You also want to have your cellphone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alerts so that you're sure once the threat has passed.
Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper. So that once you write down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies. So that if you cannot use your cellphone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time. Or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster, you want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit. Water bottles and snacks like granola bars. Change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit. Some cash in case you need to use it later. That contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there. Any important documents that your family needs. Copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you. Make a copy, put it in your kit. Chargers for cellphones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy. So that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them too. North Texas is the most disaster prone area in the United States. And I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
You don't have to go to the edges of DFW to find new business opportunities. There's a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access. And it's waiting for you.
Duncanville, the city of champions has opened for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine. And we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs. The city of Duncanville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between. There's a perfect spot waiting in Duncanville. The city has an established community and they are excited about the growth.
We lived here in Duncanville since 2000. We love living here because the communities are amazing. The schools are great and there's always something to do around here. We're excited to see new businesses come to Duncanville. And we're excited to see the city grow for the next 20 years.
What makes this city a great place to have a business is that it's a great place to live. The lower cost of living, fantastic schools, central location and beautiful nature make Duncanville a uniquely special place in DFW.
I opened Roma's in Duncanville, October 26, 2011. The support from the community here in Duncanville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Duncanville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
DFW is growing incredibly fast and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Duncanville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
Hi, this Officer Sluna with the Duncanville Traffic Unit. Just letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Duncanville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the school's lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking and also to put your cellphones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th. And the Duncanville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unintended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Duncanville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with Onward.
As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the backside. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Talia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Duncanville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women Shelter, Genesis Women Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children. Counseling support, because that's really important. Trauma Support Services of North Texas, as well as the Victim Intervention Program by Parkland. They provide those services, as well as immigration. I do assist with the U-Visa process, as well as Bosaik Services. So there's an array of resources and services for victims that are experiencing domestic violence. Victims can contact me through my direct office line. That is 972-707-3832. They can always give me a call. I receive text messages as well, but I'm here to give them support and information.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've got to go shelter in place. When sheltering in place, whether at home, at work, or in public, you always want to shelter inside. Never shelter outdoors. When sheltering in place, there might be an area with a sign that says "shelter area." That means that this area is safe for you to shelter from a tornado. Shelter in a room that is most interior to the building, meaning that there are no windows in the room and none of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor. If you're in the bathroom, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms. If you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you, keep your head protected. You also want to have your cellphone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alerts so that you're sure once the threat has passed.
Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper. So that once you write down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies. So that if you cannot use your cellphone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time. Or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster, you want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit. Water bottles and snacks like granola bars. Change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit. Some cash in case you need to use it later. That contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there. Any important documents that your family needs. Copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you. Make a copy, put it in your kit. Chargers for cellphones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy. So that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them too. North Texas is the most disaster prone area in the United States. And I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
You don't have to go to the edges of DFW to find new business opportunities. There's a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access. And it's waiting for you.
Duncanville, the city of champions has opened for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine. And we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs. The city of Duncanville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between. There's a perfect spot waiting in Duncanville. The city has an established community and they are excited about the growth.
We lived here in Duncanville since 2000. We love living here because the communities are amazing. The schools are great and there's always something to do around here. We're excited to see new businesses come to Duncanville. And we're excited to see the city grow for the next 20 years.
What makes this city a great place to have a business is that it's a great place to live. The lower cost of living, fantastic schools, central location and beautiful nature make Duncanville a uniquely special place in DFW.
I opened Roma's in Duncanville, October 26, 2011. The support from the community here in Duncanville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Duncanville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
DFW is growing incredibly fast and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Duncanville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
Hi, this Officer Sluna with the Duncanville Traffic Unit. Just letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Duncanville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the school's lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking and also to put your cellphones down. are walking, and also to put your cell phones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Dunkinville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th, and the Dunkinville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Dunkinville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with OnCure. As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the backside. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Talia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Dunkinville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women's Shelter, Genesis Women's Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children, counseling support because that's really important, trauma support services of North Texas, as well as the Victim Intervention Program by Parkland. They provide those services. As well as immigration, I do assist with the UVisa process, as well as mosaic services. So there's an array of resources and services for victims that are experiencing domestic violence. Victims can contact me through my direct office line, that is (972) 707-3832. They can always give me a call. I receive text messages as well, but I'm here to give them support and information.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've got to go shelter in place. When sheltering in place, whether at home, at work, or in public, you always want to shelter inside, never shelter outdoors. When sheltering in place, there might be an area with a sign that says "Shelter Area." That means that this area is safe for you to shelter from a tornado. Shelter in a room that is most interior to the building, meaning that there are no windows in the room and none of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor. If you're in the bathroom, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms, since you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you, keep your head protected. You also want to have your cell phone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alert so that you're sure once the threat has passed. Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long. So identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list. The best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper so that once you've wrote down all the contacts you need, you can fold it up and put it in your wallet, in your backpack, or even keep a copy in your car. It's really important to include all the contact numbers, meaning cell phones, for everyone in your household, but also numbers like your insurance companies so that if you cannot use your cell phone for whatever reason after an emergency, you have all those important numbers already written down. The third thing you want to do with your family before a disaster is to build a family emergency kit. This is the kit that you would take to your shelter location in case you're there for a long period of time, or if you had to leave your house in the middle of the night during a disaster, you want stuff in here that will sustain you and your family. So important things that you should put in your kit: water bottles and snacks like granola bars; change of clothing for each person in the household if you have room in your kit; some cash in case you need to use it later; that contact communications list that you put together, keep a copy in there; any important documents that your family needs, copies of insurance, information for your house, for your car, pets, any of that that you want with you, make a copy, put it in your kit; chargers for cell phones. I need glasses, so I keep an extra pair of glasses in my kit as well. If you have pets, also remember that you need to make a kit for your pet to include food, water, copies of their vaccination records, maybe even a toy, so that when you leave with your pet during an emergency, you have stuff for them too. North Texas is the most disaster-prone area in the United States, and I don't say that to scare you, but I say that to say that you need to prepare before disaster strikes. So follow all the steps we talked about today, and you'll be more prepared for the next one.
You don't have to go to the edges of DFW to find new business opportunities. There's a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access, and it's waiting for you.
Dunkinville, the city of champions, is open for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine, and we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs, the city of Dunkinville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between, there's a perfect spot waiting in Dunkinville. The city has an established community, and they are excited about the growth.
We live here in Dunkinville since 2000. We love living here because the communities are amazing, the schools are great, and there's always something to do around here. We're excited to see new businesses come to Dunkinville, and we're excited to see the city grow for the next 20 years.
What makes the city a great place to have a business is that it's a great place to live. The lower cost of living, fantastic schools, central location, and beautiful nature make Dunkinville a uniquely special place in DFW.
I opened Roma's in Dunkinville October 26, 2011. The support from the community here in Dunkinville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Dunkinville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
DFW is growing incredibly fast, and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Dunkinville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
Hi, this is Officer Luna with the Dunkinville Traffic Unit. Just letting you know that tomorrow, August 10th, Dunkinville ISD starts school back. Letting you know with the school's lights are flashing, if you do receive a citation, the fines can double. Just remember while you're in the school zone, pay attention to all the kids that are walking, and also to put your cell phones down.
Hi, my name is Lauren Sanchez, Regional Emergency Manager for the cities of Cedar Hill, Dunkinville, DeSoto, and Lancaster. Fire Prevention Week is celebrated from October 8th through October 14th, and the Dunkinville Fire Department would like to remind all residents that fire prevention and fire safety start with you. Always pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know that kitchen fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? That's why it's important for all residents to understand that fire prevention and cooking safety is extremely important. Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and Fire Prevention Week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
Hello, champions. I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Dunkinville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
Hi, I'm here with OnCure. As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the backside. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Talia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Dunkinville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women's Shelter, Genesis Women's Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children. The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children.
All right, we're about one minute away. We have a new clock up there. So it is accurate, and we're moving on that clock. Unless Apple time is way off, and I don't think it is. Apple time is within a few seconds, so, okay. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our briefing session for the City Council on May 21st, 2024. Timestamp City Secretary is 6 o'clock in the evening. So we'll be moving on to the agenda items. City Manager, floor is yours, sir.
Sure, so we'll jump right in. 4A is the minutes, so moving on to the previous two minutes. So moving on to 4B. Consider a resolution approving a property transfer agreement between the city of Duncanville and the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation for the purposes of economic development activities. And our economic development folks are actually at the ISC conference, so I will do my best to discuss this with you and answer questions. But this transfer agreement that's attached to this particular item would set up the agreement that we had previously talked about, where we would be, the city or parcel that it owns would be selling those to the DCEDC for them to develop. In turn, we're having conversations with the DCEDC about them investing money in the operations of facilities and everything that we need for city operations. Specifically, we have two offers, two different parcels, 727 Cockroville and 730 East I-20, that we want to have the DCEDC continue discussions about those offers. And both would be market value or better. And I say or better because of the conversations about that.
Mr. McNabb, then, Mr. Prince.
Can you briefly discuss kind of while we're doing this?
Yeah, so we have a couple of, was it a month or so ago? We talked about there's about $5.3 million in assessed property value that is off the tax rolls currently, that is currently owned by the city of Duncanville. And the goal here is to not only put those parcels back on the tax rolls, but for them to be contributing members of our community from an economic development perspective. And additionally, so the DCEDC can actually invest in operations and city facilities. We've got some needs at the Field House. We have some needs here at City Hall and some others. And we've been working with the DCEDC now for a couple of months. The Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation. I know council knows that, but for the public, just in case they're asking what the DCEDC is. And so that's kind of the 30,000-foot version of why.
Mr. Cusack.
So we have to approve both of these. We're approving them both at the same time? So either one or both or none?
Right, so the agreement, right, would allow us to do that, that spell down. And then both of these parcels are earmarked with that. We have offers on both parcels. I can tell you, obviously, once it gets to a little bit later stage, we'll be bringing back additional stuff for the council's review in terms of the development of the parcels. But the offers are both market value or higher. The one parcel, I believe we actually have another offer coming in, which will be even higher than the current. That's the I-20 parcel. I'll share with you that particular parcel. We have a couple of different interested parties in hotels, hotels, restaurants, and possibly other. All on that building are all parcel together. 727 Cockroville, I don't think it's any secret. We have been attached the stuff to the agenda. We're looking at the company HTO Corporation that's interested in purchasing that.
So I'd like to decide and remove the individual consideration.
So if everyone would make a note, item 4B, consent, is moving to individual consideration. That would become item 5D. From 4B. One other tip to follow up. I know that we've been talking about this for a couple of months now, but the president and the entire DCEDC board is fully conversant with this process itself and the properties. And the proposals for these two properties emanated from the DCEDC or was from our former director of economic development. Where did these two properties emanate from?
So, well, I'll just tell you, the HTO came prior work in 2023, prior director and that sort of stuff. One of the proposals on the I-20 came from 2023. One is written.
Okay, very good. Okay, go on to 4C.
4C, consider a resolution authorizing the Aurora. I'll skip the number of Harrington Park and 10-mile-laying wastewater aerial reroutes and improvements to the Texas standard construction through the city's competitive bid process for utility infrastructure improvements with a contract amount of $748,079.20 and additional amount of $149,615.84 as a project contingency for a total amount not to exceed $897,695.40. Assistant Public Works Director Matt Bryan is here to help answer any questions you have.
Seeing that, we're good.
And that concludes the consentment test.
Moving on to item two, City Council calendar, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday on May 25th is the fire truck pool at the senior center parking lot. May 27th is the Memorial Day holiday with the Memorial Day ceremony from 10 to 11 at Memorial Park.
And the city is closed?
Yes, and the city offices are closed. For June, June 17th is the Duncanville Arts Commission presents a Juneteenth pop-up gallery, June 17th through the 23rd. And also in June, we have the council workshop. Tentative details will be forthcoming.
Sorry, with the Juneteenth, the pop-up gallery, is there going to be a special event on 17th to open up the event?
The Juneteenth pop-up gallery for the Arts Commission.
17th is the 19th. I think they're looking at doing a reception on the 18th?
Mr. Contreras and Ms. Owens, yes?
Just a quick question. The city offices are closed for Juneteenth on which day?
We're closed the Monday, yes.
That's the federal holiday. Ms. Owens, Jeffs, into this question in terms of what Mr. Prince was asking.
Are you talking about June 18th?
Is there going to be a reception?
June 18th, yes.
So invitations will be coming out. Everybody just see that and understand what's happening. Yeah, good.
So the 17th is just the pop-up gallery? The tent and pop-up gallery? Because I'm asking because I see the 17th.
It's going to be a multi-day gallery.
Okay.
That's what is being planned out is having a multi-day gallery at a location, and then the 18th there will be a reception.
Okay.
And I believe on the 19th it'll be open for longer hours.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. City Council workshop tentative is set for June 25th. Details are coming. We have a council meeting, and that's still a question of whether to have a council meeting on the June 2nd. And we have July, I'm sorry, July 2nd, the July 2nd council meeting.
Why don't we discuss that now? Since it's something that we normally do just prior to the July 4th holiday.
It's the Tuesday, according to the plan.
We have sometimes held city council meetings, sometimes we do not. But I think it's time now to put discussion on. I guess it's on the calendar to be there. Question would be, do we hold it or do we not hold it? Two days prior to the holiday itself.
What items do you know that's coming down the pipeline? Is there anything that?
The June 4th and the June 18th meeting. The June 4th meeting in particular is pretty heavy. The June 18th, I would say, is light. Because we didn't know what your plans were for July, we've been kind of strategically looking at that. And the plan was at the June 4th meeting, which is your governance meeting, to have something before you, but it would help if you kind of gave us some direction tonight, whether or not you actually want to do it or not.
I'm open to it, Mr. Prince, go ahead.
Open to doing or hoping to not?
I'm sorry, I'm open to having it on the 2nd.
And I'm open to having it as well. I guess the mayor and I ask is the staff, how's the holidays and vacation lineup? Because they've been working hard and stuff, so I think they do need time as well, too. So I don't, again, I'm either way, but if it benefits the staff, then I'm willing to wait until the 16th.
Or do you want to wait till the 4th of June meeting to look at this a little further? Instead of making a hard decision tonight and maybe see?
Well, the only thing is, if we wait till the June 4th, I need to know what to put on paper for the meeting. So if I had some general direction tonight, that would help. I mean, you see the staff around the trim. The staff is very dedicated. So to your point, I mean, if you wanted to skip it, I don't think it would hurt us too much on timing to just have it on the 16th. And the staff would certainly appreciate the night off, so there you go.
Okay. There you have it, 16th.
There's the info we're waiting for. So cancel for, cancel to July?
June, okay, thank you. And July 4th is the July 4th parade. On the 5th and 6th is the red, white, and barbecue. And the council meeting on the 16th. And that's all I have.
All right, yeah, Mr. McNabb.
I see Ms. Owens at the back. Ms. Owens, can you tell us a little bit more about this festival? Because usually it's been the one day, so now we're doing three?
Yes, I can give you a brief. There's going to be a briefing at the next meeting. Sorry. There's going to be a full briefing at the next meeting, but it is a three-day event that starts July 4th with our traditional 4th of July that we're used to. And then the 5th and the 6th, we're extending it into a barbecue competition.
Is that the signature event that we've been looking for?
Yes.
So this is the first annual Duncanville Signature event?
The inaugural, yes.
First event.
And then we have a second one coming up on September 16th.
Yes, the 15th.
There'll be a second signature event.
September 16th?
That's a secret, I guess.
That's Hispanic, Latin, and Mexico independence.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
Another comment before we move on to the gentleman. Okay. Going to item number three, Briefings and Presentations. First one we have is to discuss the selection of Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth to represent the city of Duncanville at the annual Midwest Southwest Juneteenth event. Mr. Seemson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I don't have a formal presentation this evening, but just as a quick background, four years ago, the city of Lancaster started the Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth. I guess tradition now for each city to be represented by Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth at the Northwest Juneteenth event in the hosting city. So we're coming here for you tonight to get your recommendations on who will be representing Duncanville for Mr. and Mrs. Juneteenth for 2024.
I know last year when we participated, we submitted the names to the city secretary, and then there was a vote. All the names are added to. And then there was a vote, uh, all the names are added to something. I can't remember the system that was used, but it was a blind vote. Based on the names that were submitted. Is that how we're going to carry forth, forth this time? Will we email the city secretary or do you want us to provide your names tonight?
That's certainly a decision. How you guys want to handle that process is up to you guys, but that's like a reasonable, um, request. Don't go dead last year.
Okay.
That is up to you guys and how you want to handle that process.
Mr. Contreras, there.
Well, I just think that it takes some more time to think about this because we all found out, uh, whenever we got the agenda last week. And there wasn't a communication, it was fault to have us already be thinking about this for tonight's meeting. So I would prefer that we have a little time to send in, as Ms. Gooden said, send in our, our picks and, uh, we can pick a day where we need to send them in by.
Yeah, let's look at that, yeah.
And just so your folks know, I did, reading the agenda last Friday, I sent some information, my nomination to Mr. Finch that about John Aditi Ewing. I don't know if you remember John Aditi Ewing. I recognized, they're a husband and a wife team. They, in fact, citation of City of Champions, the Sip, September of twenty twenty-one, I recognize him as City, City, Champions of the city. They run a program for young entrepreneurs and, uh, primary African-American. And they have an event out here in our park, actually. Very well attended from all over the metroplex because of how strong John Aditi Ewing. So I sent that information to Mr. Finch and said, if you wanted to send to the rest of the council, it'd be more than welcome to. So knowing this is coming up and knowing my, whatever, I wanted to participate to some extent and put my nomination in for John Aditi Ewing. So, Mr. Finch, you may want to, tomorrow, send, send that to folks so they can see the citation because, uh, they're just, I don't, does anybody know John Aditi Ewing? I don't, some do, okay. They are, their son, act has actually, let's see, this is like three years ago now. Their son has actually published a book. I think right now he's like thirteen or fourteen years old. He's published a book on stock investing, financials.
Oh, yo, John, John, I can, I do know John.
John Ewing, yeah, and his wife, yeah. Yeah. So if you do that, Mr. Finch, so everybody can see that. And I think as Mr. Contreras said, just a little more time.
Yeah.
To build a.
If, if I just, do you know, I know, and I apologize, uh, I know that David Keys, that they had reached out to him and he's with the conference this week. I want to say that there was a date and that was why he was trying to get this on the agenda that's coming up pretty soon, right? That they wanted the information by.
They're, I think that they wanted it within the next, uh, week, ten days.
I think so, before the June fourth meeting.
So what we could do, like we did last year.
I mean, I have my names now.
Yeah, you submit your names and we can do the vote online. I think we did that through the city's office.
You're talking about, um, Reggie and Lashonda Dupart, they have a program also for inner-city children and, um, they teach life skills, um, empowerment as far as STEM projects and they just recently had a golf tournament where a hundred of the percent of the proceeds go to the charity to help the children. And I think they're in District One, so.
Is it, is it too much pressure to have them by close of business Friday?
I don't think so. I don't think so. But rather than go down the names here because we're doing the.
Yeah.
They sound great, by the way. They sound great, but if we're going to go through this process, yeah, let's, let's.
So set it close of business Friday for submitting that and you'll shoot mine out to them. Or you're just doing that. Okay. Uh, well, we got to item three B, receiver presentation for Dunkinville Police Department to utilize federal equitable sharing fund to purchase three patrol vehicles.
Hey, good evening, Sergeant. Uh, Chief, I want to introduce Sergeant McCarty. Um, he has, uh, been with the department for quite a long time. For the past seven years, he's been in charge of our fleet, working side by side, hand in hand with Public Works. Uh, now with Matt, but, uh, with ASA. So he is our resident expert when it comes to our fleet. Um, so if you would allow me to, uh, have him provide you with this brief, thank you.
Hey, thank you for having me. Uh, tonight I'm going to discuss the purchase of, uh, three additional patrol vehicles. Uh, a little background on this, as you guys know. Uh, back in twenty seventeen, the city council at the time requested the police department find options to increase the fleet replacement rotation beyond the then-two-year time. Um, as a result, the rotation was, rotation period was expanded to the current three-year rotation. I believe we started that. We was able to accomplish three years in twenty twenty. Uh, at the February twenty, twenty twenty-four city council meeting, a resolution was passed, uh, twenty twenty-four, two, two, three, and was presented and approved to accept the deposit of federal and state asset forfeiture funds. Uh, the Dunkinville Police Department, uh, were intending to utilize federal equitable share, equitable sharing funds, sorry, to purchase three fully equipped patrol vehicles. Our current staff or our current analysis for our fleet is we have nineteen patrol vehicles assigned to us. Uh, those are divided up amongst four patrol shifts. Obviously, we have to share those. Uh, each patrol shift is staffed with seven officers and two supervisors requiring nine vehicles to be brand bearing each one. Uh, due to mechanical failures and vehicle crashes, several vehicles are frequently out of service for extended periods of time. And which causes us to remain the, use the remaining operational vehicles for twenty-four hours a day many times. The challenges that this causes us to face, uh, is a continuous use of patrol vehicles without adequate downtime. It has led to the increased maintenance costs and frequent repairs. The intensive twenty-four hour usage significantly reduces the life expectancy of our vehicles, necessitating more frequent replacements. And the challenges underscore, or these challenges underscore the need for an expanded fleet. So our solution to this is to purchase three additional patrol vehicles using federal asset forfeiture funds. Uh, this expansion will allow for better rotation and necessary downtime, which can lower maintenance costs and extend lifespan of each vehicle. Uh, it will also ensure that all ships are adequately equipped, even when some vehicles are out of service, maintaining seamless operations capability. Uh, just a note in here, for a city event a couple of years ago last year, the city, we asked, or the police department actually had to borrow some vehicles from the school district, uh, to perform the, the security aspect for the Fourth of July celebration. Uh, we didn't have enough operational at that time, had to seek alternative methods. That's pretty much it. I'm open to questions.
If I can just piggyback on something, just so the council's aware, so we have been working very hard. Assistant Public Works Director Matt Bryan and I meet every single Friday morning and we go through a list of our entire fleet and the vehicles that are out of service. Uh, Patrol Command actually has a TV monitor in their, in their command post where we actually go over and it shows us every single vehicle and, and we joke because it's red. The vehicles that are out of service or there's an issue, there's a red. Sometimes it's things like problem with internet, sometimes it's a problem with something small, sometimes it just needs an inspection, sometimes it's, but, but specifically I want to commend Matt because Matt is really trying really hard to get the fleet, um, back up and in operation. I know he's meeting with ASA, uh, regularly to really address those. Sometimes fluke things happen like the accident or the tractor trailer that hit the tri, I mean, there, there's nothing we can do. Those things happen, right? But, um, I can tell you that there's a huge push to make sure that the police fleet is operational. But the issue is, we just don't have enough vehicles. That's kind of what it comes down to and that's why we're here tonight, so.
I may piggyback on also like, especially in a situation where we have wrecked vehicles, we rely on insurance companies to move these projects forward. So that in and of itself can cause delays.
Well, this sound, to me, it sounds like a no-brainer. And I, I don't think there's anything we're approved, we need to approve that to your money, right?
Just a question.
But I do have a kind of overall question. Um, with these vehicles, having these many miles on them, do we have occasion where they actually break down while an officer's responding to a call?
Yes, numerous times. Um, just a couple nights ago, I had got an email from an officer that he was responding to a call. And the vehicle just completely lost all power. And they, I believe they had to call a tow truck out and that vehicle's in the shop.
Okay, thank you.
What, what's the timeline for these vehicles getting, do they have to get equipped?
Yes, sir.
So what's the timeline?
So a lot of that was with the asset forfeiture, I believe. The, the purchase of these, we need to have them by October one over September thirtieth for the fiscal year. Uh, I was able to reach out to a couple different outfitters and the ones that I got the quote from, they assured me that they have these vehicles on the ground and can happen to us before October one.
And, and just along my comments, Mr. Contreras, is that it's not a good day in Dunkinville when we say we can't respond to a call because we don't have a working vehicle, so I'll, you know, I'll call HBL for getting this and, and this is a, this is.
Uh, Mr. Contreras, Chief or, or Sergeant, can you explain where the, that resource or asset forfeiture funds comes from? Why that money is available to us to use from now?
So I'll, I'll give you a kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view. It comes from a relentless work, uh, from our narcotics investigators. It sees funds that they, you know, sell assets, things that, uh, that they've purchased using illegal funds from. We'll sell that, use those funds, it all comes into a, um, really an account, um, that Jennifer, I'm not sure she's in here. She manages for us. So it's coming from our narcotics.
I just wanted to.
Yes, sir.
Put that information on the table because everybody can't, here's the money available, where's the bucket?
Correct.
That's where the bucket comes from. So vehicles are available for purchase and they're ready to be outfitted? Or it's the whole ball of wax, we're buying a vehicle and the outfit?
The, the, the vehicles are ready to be purchased and then be outfitted.
Okay.
So, uh, it's through the buyboard and all that. Uh, there's, the dealership has them on the ground. And as soon as they're purchased, they'll be shipped to our outfitter and they will get things going. That's the key.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm it. All right, thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Item number three C, discuss initiating professional services contract for Dog Park Master Planning with Kimmy Horn and Associates. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I believe I started a very similar presentation at your last meeting regarding the Lad Master Plan by saying it was a watershed movement for that project. And I will say the same for this project. We've been talking about the Dog Park for a long time now. And we're now getting that ball, but, and so we're excited to come before you tonight and talk a little bit about, uh, the upcoming proposed master plan uh, that we're working on with our purchasing department on securing a contract with Kimmy Horn and Associates. Uh, a bit of background is that the, uh, this project is being funded, uh, by the hundred thousand dollars that you guys allocated uh, in this year's budget using ARPA funds. Uh, the current location of the park, uh, is at the northeast corner of Wheatland Road and Dennis Drive, uh, just east of Rotary Park. So, I'm on the same page there. Um, we have begun the, uh, solicitation process, we've got pretty far down the road. Uh, we did do a request for qualifications from industry firms. We received four responses. Uh, and then we had a committee of staff from both Parks and Recreation as well as our planning department review those submissions and we determined that Kimmy Horn was our, um, top firm for this project. Uh, we are currently working with Kimmy Horn again on establishing a scope of services and associating costs with that. And before we get there, um, and I will share with you that we are looking at approximately seventy-five thousand dollars for this project. I have with me tonight, uh, Ken, uh, Ken Zicorder, uh, she is with Kimmy Horn, so as we, uh, as I finish my project, uh, my presentation, she's here to answer any questions you might have about her firm as well. Some of the projects, I know we include this in your, in your packet, uh, that we, uh, Kimmy Horn's been involved with is the Dog Park in Mesquite, uh, Burleson, Texas. Uh, and then out in Princeton, Texas, where there's a tremendous amount of growth I know. Um, so those are just a few of the many projects they've worked on, uh, when it comes specifically with dog parks. We wanted to share with you and then, again, just want to ask any questions you might have. I will share with you that we're now talking about also the next step of where we move both with the Lad property, the master plan, as well as the Dog Park, and that is the creation of perhaps using a steering committee for both projects. Uh, and then we would also entertain with you guys, uh, helping us put together those steering committees. We'd like to have at least, or we have to have three council members on each of those committees. Once you get more than that, we have to, that's cool, I mean, it gets a bit more complicated. So three members of the council would be really preferred in each of those steering committees. So we'll talk about it more in, um, probably our next meeting. Um, if you guys are in agreement with looking forward with this, we'll have this, uh, contract under June four, Jennifer.
A question for Kimmy Horn.
Yes.
Um, really glad to see this, by the way. Something I've been talking about for a while, but, uh, in my personal research on dog parks, I see a variation between real turf and artificial turf. And I think the, the photo for Burleson actually shows sod.
Yes.
So is, I know, do, do you permit the city to make that determination in terms of what's best for the ground cover? Or is that something Kimmy Horn does naturally?
We will make recommendations and then discuss what the maintenance upkeep of the different options are because with real sod, it's something that is the most cost-effective that you'll put in. Um, but a lot of times that can get torn up, you know, around digging and, you know, all the other things dogs do. So a lot of times artificial turf is more durable. There is a maintenance aspect to that of cleaning it, making sure that it's sanitary. Other options are like decomposed granite, mulch, all things that have a varying, uh, capacity for maintenance. So we just talked through what the options would be and go through what maintenance budgets and staff's desires would be on that.
So that's something still out there to be decided.
Mm-hmm, and that'll be something that we'll talk through and determine as part of this master plan.
Um, good.
First, ARPA funds. There's a date that they have to be, um, obligated and then a date that it needs to be spent.
Correct.
So could we just let the public know date of obligation and then date of spending?
So it's the end of this year for obligation and it's the end of, um, twenty-six for use. Just so you're aware, uh, next meeting, June fourth, when Finance does their presentation, they're going to do an ARPA update.
Um, so seventy-five K, is that seventy-five K as of today or will that be seventy-five K when we begin to start the project? Will it possibly fluctuate or is seventy-five K solid?
It'll be a set price. We'll, we'll come forward to you with a contract, attorney's meeting, it'll be a set price.
Okay, and then one other thing, there is a runoff, um, channel creek that runs through, uh, Rotary Park. And with the feces, possible pollution, uh, sod is notably helpful for that. I will allow, of course, not allow, but I trust you to make that decision. But, um, I'm sure, Kimmy Horn, is that something you're taking into consideration as well?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, what we're going to do is we'll do a whole site plan analysis, we'll do topography studies and then we'll make sure that all of our grading and drainage is, is positive. We'll take into consideration how waste is being removed and different containers and other things throughout the site. So we'll definitely look at all of that.
Those are my three questions, thank you.
Take a lot of the questions here.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask about all of our funds as well, so thank you for asking that, that question, thank you for answering. Uh, I, I guess my other question is, when this is done, how much, how much community engagement is involved as, as well?
We're going to have three meetings, um, with different, um, groups, so we're going to have a meeting with the city council, the Parks and Rec Department, and then also the neighboring, um, businesses and HOAs. So we're planning to have as much community engagement as we possibly can, so we'll send out information and flyers about those events and meetings and get those set up, um, to try to get as much input from the community as we possibly can. And we'll have several, part of the contract, there are, uh, there's going to be two options and so we're trying to make sure that we can encompass, um, everyone's desires and then, uh, then finalize a one singular plan that everyone thinks best is for the community.
Now would be included in the scope of services, those community meetings, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and you said that y'all are still kind of working out what that scope of services would be.
We have pretty much finalized those. If we need to make any tweaks based upon any comments you guys make tonight, we can certainly do that.
And, uh, another question I had is what, what kind of timeline is being proposed for the completion of the master plan?
Let me double check my weeks. It's towards the end of the year. My weeks in here.
I thought you said thirty-three weeks.
Yes, yeah, it was thirty-three weeks on the end of that and that's just teed up to, we'll start out with survey that usually takes about four weeks. We'll do a tree inventory, um, to make, make sure that we're preserving all those existing trees. And then we'll have the draft master plan, which encompasses the two concepts and all the meetings and the, or initial meetings. and the, or initial meetings. And then we'll have the final, um, draft master plan that will also have some community engagement and meetings that then be finalized.
So, so within the master plan, we'll have identified from this date, uh, 33 weeks.
Mm-hmm.
To the completion date, so.
Yes.
I would say, I would say as maximum too. We, we want, we want to include this project along as quickly as we can. We know it's important to the community. So we can move it along quicker than that, we certainly will do that.
And I know that Village Tech seems, you've been heavily involved, you know, they have legacy projects. It's gonna go from one class to the next. Are they still gonna be, are they gonna be involved in this? And get them on maybe steering committee?
Certainly if you got, if you want to include someone from Village Tech on that committee, you certainly can. Uh, we, we certainly intend to reach out to their, to their group to make sure that they know about the public meetings, public input, opportunities for them to share. Uh, you know, they have been a big partner in this project to date and so we want to continue that process.
And then the last question is, so, uh, 75,000, we have, the budget's 100,000. So if there's anything left over, can that go into?
Construction.
Construction. Construction.
Well, thank God, you know, I just wanna say, you know, I was, when I was on the park's board, um, there was one citizen at the time, uh, him and I got together and we, we actually drove to pretty much every, you'd say they had a dog park within, you know, 20 miles or so. So we went to Grand Prairie, to the Logan, Blackstone. And, uh, so, you know, I'm with the mayor, I'm really excited about this. And, yeah, I wanna say from the beginning, I've been saying this throughout this whole process, is, you know, I know, I know we want a dog park, but, uh, I'm looking forward to us having a exceptional dog park and not just, you know, a couple of wraps, obstacles and a fence. And so, uh, you know, looking forward to figuring out how we can make this something that's, uh, people don't wanna go to all those other dog parks, so, um, come to the Dog and Bird Dog Park, so, thank you.
All right, Mr. Contreras and Mr. Reddick.
First off, I'd like to say that I think every council person going forward should own a dog. I'm not gonna put fingers in anybody that made a tap dog.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the description shows it at the northeast corner of Venice and West Wheatland. So the property right there doesn't come all the way to Wheatland because we have the driveway coming out of the shopping center that runs east and west. Are we talking immediately to the north of that driveway, back to the tree line?
There's only a small section that's not ours. We, most, most of that property, that property does go all the way down to Wheatland, it belongs to us. There's a small section on the far east corner.
On the southeast corner.
That's not ours. I've tried to reach out to that company several times to see if they would let me go. And they wouldn't even respond to my phone call. So, uh, maybe they'll try to get any help.
But it is, but it is, it's closer to Wheatland, as, as close as it can get on our property, just to the north of that driveway that cuts out the shopping center.
We do have plenty of our property on the condition.
Okay. First, thank you.
Okay, a couple of things. One is, uh, definitely want to be honest during committee if that's allowed for anyone. Secondly, uh, you talked about community partners. Is it, in, in your experience, does the citizens eventually take over and leave the city? And so it's self, self-sufficient or self, uh, funding? So the second part of that, you don't have to answer right now, but, uh, sponsorship. Say we have TruWe down the street, they're supposed to sponsor, uh, is your firm experienced with something like that?
We have seen other parks go out for public funding. Um, I work in a city called Mineral Wells and that happens quite a bit. Um, they actually were in the process of building a dog park. It was part of their, um, I, I wasn't involved in it, but I grew up there, so just burying the no. Um, but they had a, uh, it was a leadership mineral wells class that was their project. And so they went out and helped get funding for it. And so, um, usually in, um, smaller communities, there's usually people that wanna rally together. And if we can get some excitement, hopefully that's what I'm here to do, is provide some really cool designs and renderings to get people excited for that and get funding. So, yes, we have seen that.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
You know, I can just envision a town hall, right? People with their dogs. Can you imagine the excitement? People with their pups, you know?
That's the only one that's gonna have child, not me. Be a liar, but I don't wanna be a witness.
I, I consider friends of the dog park myself.
That happens a lot, a lot of times. I have a friend of the dog park, that's, that's what I was gonna say, to help the, the maintenance. When dog parks became popular about 20 years ago, uh, there was a love hate relationship among Parks and Recreation professionals from that standpoint because of the maintenance that was required. I will tell you one thing I've seen and talked to other professionals that have these parks, is that dog owners are typically very responsible. And they, uh, they take, they clean back to themselves for the most part. These aren't folks who just, uh, let their dogs run free and do whatever they want and not, and not take care of them. So typically dog parks, dog parks, people who visit them are very responsible owners and take care of this person.
Uh, if you can, should have comments, sir.
If I could, so, I, congratulations on everybody that just got elected. Here, I appreciate you're coming off with the comment I'm getting ready to make. And I know you guys are all champion council members, okay? But we have three critically important planning projects that are all gonna be happening at the same time. The comprehensive plan, the lad master plan, and the dog park. So, um, we need three council members on each ideally. And I would love to bring that back at the next meeting and kinda define that as part of the governor's meeting. I believe on the comp plan right now is Gooden, Contreras and Coontz, I believe. Um, so as you think about the dog park and lad, just keep in mind, these are gonna be going on at the same time. And so, we're happy to put you all to work, but, uh, just want you to be aware, they're all three gonna be happening at the same time.
Do you bet y'all celebrate in there?
So, right.
And so volunteers for which?
I just wrote five for this one time.
And I do say that all the time. It's his district, he should be doing it.
I'll do the lad and that one.
I'll let you know.
And anything else from Mr. Stevenson or for your representative, Kimmy Horn?
Thank you.
Glad to see you. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that finishes our work session and briefing session. Uh, timestamp on that is, we're in sync. It is now 6:40. Uh, we will begin our open city council meeting at 7:00 sharp. Very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are just moments away from beginning our city council meeting. Let you know that we are broadcasting and we are doing audio and video broadcasting and recording tonight. And according to clocks, we're going to synchronize. We just had a little discussion about what time it is. It's almost nineteen hundred. Everybody in the room that knows what nineteen hundred is? Military time, twenty-four hour time. So I'm watching my clock up here. We're synchronized with back that one. This was gonna be the one for the timestamp tonight. It was probably six fifty-seven before. All right. The time is seven o'clock PM on May the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-four, and we are prepared to open our city council meeting. City Secretary, the timestamp is seven o'clock PM. Thank you very much. So just a little bit of housekeeping before we get going. If you've read the agenda, excuse me, we will be following the agenda specifically as it stands, that I will, I will call it the order, do the invocation by Father Uche from the Holy Spirit Catholic Church. I will then lead the pledges, and at that point, I'm going to have the opportunity to move to that lectern and make some farewell remarks. And once I'm done with that, then the oaths of office are going to be administered for the incoming council members. And so that's the, the order that we will go through. Just wanted to make sure everybody understands that. So with that, I'm gonna call forward Father Uche from the Holy Spirit Catholic Church to give our invocation. Please rise.
A very loving Father, who through your son Jesus Christ has revealed to us the love you have for every creature, and with him he has sent all the Holy Spirit to enable us to appreciate the gift of one another. We humbly ask for your assistance of the whole same Holy Spirit on your sons and daughters united here this evening for our council meeting. May they be able to unite in the desire and commitment for the common good, justice, safety, and progress for our lovely city, illumine their minds and hearts in identifying the possibilities of our city and people, and providing remedies to them, especially for the less privileged of our society today. We thank you for the grace you've given to our outgoing mayor, Barry Gordon, and his council members. And we thank you for the incoming one, Greg Contreras, and his council members for your special blessings upon them as they take up this mantle once again for our common good. Protect every one of them and their families as they carry out their various duties for the good of the society, and open the hearts of all inhabitants of this city to be responsible citizens as they collaborate with the work of our elected officials. We make our prayer through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please be seated. Good evening, Mayor Lette Contreras, city council members, City Manager Finch, and fellow citizens. Being your mayor was not on my radar. We loved living in Duncanville and did not have time to be involved in the city until two thousand and fifteen after successfully recovering from a traumatic brain injury. I applied for a seat on the board of the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation and ended up being the president of the DCEDC for two years. During that time, I also served as the vice president on the TIF. And in two thousand and seventeen, one of our citizens, a friend and someone who I worked for in the past, Ken Weaver, came and asked me to consider running for mayor since the Honorable David Green, who is here tonight, was not planning to seek reelection. That initiated a serious time of months of prayer for me, and it led to today. Serving the citizens of the city of Duncanville for the past six years has been challenging, educational, rewarding, and most of all, fulfilling. Servant leadership has been a serious calling for me. I felt called to be your mayor. The opportunity to serve the city of champions is one of the greatest experiences of my life, and I'm grateful to the Lord for using me in this capacity. It has also been an honor for Marlis to serve our citizens with me as your first lady. It's not easy for me to step away from being your mayor, but I know I've heard from God once again that I must prepare for the new season for He and what Marlis has done for me in preparing us for the future. He, God, holds our destiny in His hands, and we are very comfortable and at peace with that. These years as your mayor have been filled with challenges and successes. We began by getting a twenty-two million dollar bond package passed without raising our citizens' taxes. A wonderful committee was selected to decide how the money would be spent and what the priorities should be for the immediate needs of our city. We've consistently moved forward with these priorities through a myriad of problems such as the changing of the city managers, the closing down of the city with the COVID pandemic, flooding, and of course, snowmageddon, and many others. I'm so pleased that we have managed to get our beautiful parks outfitted with, with exercise equipment, our new Kidsville and splash pad, and our new fire station recently completed. We have vastly improved our infrastructure, which is an ongoing management project, to keep our city a desirable place to live and work. We've rewritten some of our policies, which has helped our business community thrive, and many new businesses have come into our city. We continue to see our empty buildings reimagined and refitted with new and updated uses, which has been one of my main goals. Another main goal of mine was to not raise taxes for our citizens. While Dallas County was raising our property taxes, we managed to lower our city's part of the tax base, small percentages, and I'm grateful for this. There are some initiatives that I've started, and I must leave these to the incoming council and staff to see them accomplished. As part of our bond package, we set aside money to fix a dangerous railroad crossing at the intersection of Camp Wisdom and Main Street. When I was not able to get BNSF Rail Company to partner with us, I elevated this to Washington DC to our representative Jasmine Crockett in her office in Washington. It's now been identified as a dangerous crossing by the Federal Transportation Agency. I ask our new city council to continue to press for this to become accomplished and to ask you to not divert the money that's been set aside to do something else with those monies. In two thousand and seventeen, we went door-to-door campaigning, and we found that dogs live in the vast majority of our homes in our city. I have pushed for a dog park for Duncanville ever since. I first approached the Tri-City Animal Shelter to partner with us because they had a large lot and empty land. Their board decided they were not interested. I continued asking staff about our land uses to find a suitable parcel for our dog park. We finally settled on a wonderful treeed place, perfect for a dog park, and I'm so happy that this even has been addressed by our city council tonight. I have presented plans and pictures for reimagining the greenway that passes under the larger electric grid that passes through Dallas and our city of Greenbrier and Cedar Hill and into La Soto. I've discussed this with Encore and have obtained approval from Encore to use this land for a greenway trail space. Perhaps, possibly, if the city council could, get Encore to even contribute to that particular trail. I requested and presented our pictures and ideas for a D-Ville, we call it D-Ville, D apostrophe V-I-L-L-E,
With liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Mayor Lett Contreras, City Council members, City Manager Finch, and fellow citizens. Being your mayor was not on my radar. We loved living in Duncanville and did not have time to be involved in the city until 2015 after successfully recovering from a traumatic brain injury. I applied for a seat on the Board of the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation and ended up being the president of the DCEDC for two years. During that time, I also served as the vice president on the TIF. And in 2017, one of our citizens, a friend and someone who I worked for in the past, Ken Weaver, came and asked me to consider running for mayor since the Honorable David Green, who is here tonight, was not planning to seek reelection. That initiated a serious time of months of prayer for me, and it led to today. Serving the citizens of the city of Duncanville for the past six years has been challenging, educational, rewarding, and most of all, fulfilling. Servant leadership has been a serious calling for me. I felt called to be your mayor. The opportunity to serve the city of champions is one of the greatest experiences of my life, and I'm grateful to the Lord for using me in this capacity. It has also been an honor for Marlis to serve our citizens with me as your first lady. It's not easy for me to step away from being your mayor, but I know I've heard from God once again that I must prepare for the new season for he and what Marlis has done for me in preparing us for the future. He, God, holds our destiny in his hands, and we are very comfortable and at peace with that. These years as your mayor have been filled with challenges and successes. We began by getting a $22 million bond package passed without raising our citizens' taxes. A wonderful committee was selected to decide how the money would be spent and what the priorities should be for the immediate needs of our city. We've consistently moved forward with these priorities through a myriad of problems such as the changing of the city managers, the closing down of the city with the COVID pandemic, flooding, and of course, snowmageddon, and many others. I am so pleased that we have managed to get our beautiful parks outfitted with exercise equipment, our new Kidsville and splash pad, and our new fire station recently completed. We have vastly improved our infrastructure, which is an ongoing management project, to keep our city a desirable place to live and work. We've rewritten some of our policies, which has helped our business community thrive, and many new businesses have come into our city. We continue to see our empty buildings reimagined and refitted with new and updated uses, which has been one of my main goals. Another main goal of mine was to not raise taxes for our citizens. While Dallas County was raising our property taxes, we managed to lower our city's part of the tax base, small percentages, and I'm grateful for this. There are some initiatives that I've started, and I must leave these to the incoming council and staff to see them accomplished. As part of our bond package, we set aside money to fix a dangerous railroad crossing at the intersection of Camp Wisdom and Main Street. When I was not able to get BNSF Rail Company to partner with us, I elevated this to Washington, DC, to our representative Jasmine Crockett in her office in Washington. It's now been identified as a dangerous crossing by the Federal Transportation Agency. I ask our new city council to continue to press for this to become accomplished and to ask you to not divert the money that's been set aside to do something else with those monies. In 2017, we went door-to-door campaigning, and we found that dogs live in the vast majority of our homes in our city. I have pushed for a dog park for Duncanville ever since. I first approached the Tri-City Animal Shelter to partner with us because they had a large lot and empty land. Their board decided they were not interested. I continued asking staff about our land uses to find a suitable parcel for our dog park. We finally settled on a wonderful treeed place, perfect for a dog park, and I'm so happy that this even has been addressed by our city council tonight. I have presented plans and pictures for reimagining the Greenway that passes under the larger electric grid that passes through Dallas and our city of Greenbrier and Cedar Hill and into La Soto. I've discussed this with Encore and have obtained approval from Encore to use this land for a Greenway trail space. Perhaps, possibly, if the city council could, get Encore to even contribute to that particular trail. I requested and presented our pictures and ideas for a D-Ville, we call it D-Ville, D apostrophe V-I-L-L-E, skate park, for our teens and their love of skateboarding. Our teens need an open place where they can safely gather for fun. I organized a field trip for our council and city manager for the reimagining of our old firehouse to benefit our citizens. I will excitedly watch this happen. I've been involved in many governmental organizations, our county and state, and Duncanville is recognized now as a successful city of champions for more than the athletics for which we are renowned. The wonderful diversity of our city, our position as part of the Best Southwest Partnership, and our renowned first responders make us a very unique city in the entire state of Texas. Also, I ask you to please work toward making our 20-year informal sister-city agreement with Monastero de Civiliano registered and be officially recognized by the International Sister City Organization. As your mayor, I have worked primarily behind the scenes for your city. My personal fulfillment and joy come from seeing things come to fruition and giving credit to our great city staff for their work in bringing the council's work into being. I cannot recognize our city staff individually, but all along, I have intentionally attempted to give each one the respect they deserve. I hold them all in highest esteem, and I have tried to appreciate them at every opportunity. Tonight, I thank every one of our city staff for your service to our city. In my very first council meeting in May of 2018, I was educated on municipal authority. We were discussing an issue, and a council member offered an opinion on how it might be solved. I immediately responded as a business leader with my experience, and I said to that person, "Great idea. Go take care of it." Our city attorney, this gentleman here, immediately intervened and said, "Mr. Mayor, you have no authority to direct anyone to do anything. Only the entire city council has that authority." Thank you for that education, Mr. Hager. This was vastly different from my leadership experience, but I can truthfully say that that instruction guided me and helped me every single day of my six years in office. Thank you to my fellow city council members for your work and partnership. Thank you to Mr. Finch, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Keys for great collaboration, continue our city moving through problems and the hard issues that dries daily, and onward into the dreams for our city. Thank you to all our volunteers in the many aspects of our city. For example, and to name only a few, thank you to our citizens on patrol, the members of our very important boards and committees, the Duncanville Nature Conservancy, and board volunteers, and our citizens that come out to clean up our city, and those who work with the PIP projects twice a year. I am grateful to you all. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of the city of champion as your mayor. Thank you for trusting me to be your mayor. Also, thank you to my wonderful wife, Marlis, for being at my side as the loving and gracious first lady of Duncanville. I'm grateful for being able to close this chapter of my life in obedience to God. And I close with a scripture that conveys all that is in my and Marlis's hearts. It's from the Book of Numbers, Chapter 6, verses 22 through 27, quoting the Bible. "The Lord said to Moses, 'Tell Aaron and his sons to bless the people of Israel with this special blessing.'" May the Lord bless you and protect you. May the Lord smile on you and be gracious to you. May the Lord show you his favor and give you his peace. I pray this as God's blessing over our city of champions. May God rest people, bless the city of Duncanville, the leaders, the entire loyal and dedicated city staff. Marlis and I bless you and depart with our hearts full of love for our city. God bless you. Please, please be seated. And following the agenda, the oaths of office will now be administered by our city secretary. City Secretary Chiquita Taylor.
Okay, please wait. I, Greg Contreras, do solemnly swear
I, Greg Contreras, do solemnly swear
or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties
or affirm that I will faithfully
execute
execute the duties
of the office of mayor
of the office of mayor
of the city of Duncanville, state of Texas
of the city of Duncanville, state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend
the constitution and laws
the constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's truly an honor, an absolute honor, and I want to start by thanking Mayor Gordon and his wife, Marlis, for the tremendous job that they've done for us for six years. Great ambassadors for the city of Duncanville and a great example for others to follow. Big footsteps to fill. I also want to thank my wife, Karen, who was just by my side. Actually, she was in front. I think at one point, she asked me not to step on her shadow. And so many others that are in this room, and I'm going to get to that in a minute. I promised a great friend of mine when I was talking about the things that get me emotional. Because, by the way, Barry's not embarrassed to express emotion sometimes, and he's sometimes apologetic, but he still shows emotion. I can guarantee you, I'm going to follow that trait. We have that and similar, I guarantee you. So, my dear friend who's here somewhere, Dorothy, said, "Don't cry, mayor. Do not cry." So there's certain things I'm not going to touch on today, because that'll get me. But I will tell you that I just love my wife so much and for all the
Here you go. I love you too.
It's been an incredible journey campaigning at this level, and there's a bunch of you out there that I'm going to call out in a minute. I won't call everybody's name, but I definitely want to give credit where credit's due to help us, that helped us get here. And one thing, I have a tendency sometimes, I don't do prepared speeches very well, so this is all off the cuff, no notes. And I've got to tell a quick story about a council meeting where I actually asked for the executive session, and I wasn't prepared at the moment that the mayor was turning it over to me, and I just, at that point, I had just eaten a 100
1,000
1,000
1,000
100,000 candy bar, which for those of you that venture into that area, they're sticky chocolate with caramel. And I had just loaded this little bar in my mouth when the mayor called on me, and as I looked around and they realized I was speechless, I could see, I could see light bulbs going off all on their heads, over their heads, like a cartoon, because they thought, "This is how we stop him." And so periodically at briefing, you'll see a candy bar slid across to me, saying, "Now you know what that means." But anyways, I'm eternally grateful, and it doesn't come without that what got us here. It's similar to the mayor's closing remarks. We came here through faith and through belief that we'd be led to make the right decision. And in doing so, I left my phone up there. It was a scripture, it was a scripture to summarize about David going to take on Goliath, picking up the five smooth stones. And when he gathered those stones, the summary next to the scripture said, "Don't you think he had a moment where he thought, 'What have I got myself into?'" So, trust me when I thought that, and I didn't have the stones with me. But, you know, at the moment that I made the decision, I was all in, and that's when things came to light about what this community is all about. The people that I look at, look here, this is where I have to be careful. Go back 30-plus years, coached some in soccer, people came back that I didn't even know still lived here, they came out to support. It was an amazing show that we'll never forget. And some of you, a lot of you in the audience today that fit that, fit in that area of our lives, but it just goes to show, this isn't really about me that I'm talking about right now, it's talking about our community. Community coming together to try to get to a place where we can start to move forward to get to where we need to go. One of my biggest goals in doing this was to use my institutional knowledge, which as some of you know means I'm old, but that I gathered working for 30 years for the city of Duncanville in different capacities. And I try to use that knowledge as a councilperson to help solve some problems and consult with other council members. I plan on still using that as mayor and trying to use that to benefit the conversations that we have with new city manager. We've got to stop calling him new. He's been here since January, he's doing a great job. So I really committed myself to helping him as best I could with the understanding what Duncanville's been like, how we've been successful, and help him make decisions that will be best for our future. And I can tell you right now, I think without exception, that people behind me will nod in confirmation that he's doing a remarkable job. And I hope you all learn to appreciate him. If you haven't got to meet him, you should stop by and say hi sometimes, and you're going to see, he fits in really well with our community. And with that, I will tell you that my hopes are that while we could see the elections, there was a division, and I don't think that's uncommon, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that our work is to try to bring everybody back together as best we can. We're not going to solve all the problems, but I want to see this city united, working together, and that we, as policymakers, create policies that include everybody. We talked a lot today, earlier in the meeting, about engagement and how important that is. We need to continue to engage the public on every action we take, talking to everybody that wants to interact with us, to get their input, and the city managers also following that same path. So I think with that, we have an opportunity to be very successful. So now I'm going to ask, not because it will be a stampede, I think to some extent, although somebody's pulled it off before, I would like the people that were part of my campaign that are willing to admit it to stand so that I can, I can see and remember this moment for the rest of my life. So if you would now, the supporters that were involved in supporting me and my campaign, if you would stand. So with that, I think our next piece of business would be to go on to the next swearing in. Oh. Something that was presented to me earlier to present to Barry Gordon, and again, I can't see this goes solely to Barry Gordon, because again, Marlis is a part of that package, and she's been amazing, and where
Mayor's and mayor's.
There you are. Mayor, this is a plaque that's been provided by the city. It states Duncanville City of Champions, Barry L. Gordon, for dedicated service and significant contributions as mayor, 2018 to 2024. The perfect blend of family, community, and business. They've been a shining example of that, and thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to call on the city secretary to administer the oath for council person in District 2. Don McBurnett.
I, Don McBurnett, do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully execute the duties
that I will faithfully execute the duties
of the office of council member District 2
of the office of council member District 2
of the city of Duncanville
of the city of Duncanville
state of Texas
state of Texas
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the constitution and laws
the constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of this state
and of this state
so help me God
so help me God. Thank you.
So what I want to say is, I want to thank you for Duncanville for entrusting me to serve again. Barry and I, Mayor Gordon, we started at the same time. I'm still here, I'm still standing, I'm still fighting, and I want to do what's best for Duncanville, and I want to thank you again for the opportunity. I'm glad my son Paul is with me here tonight as well, and I'm going to say, "God bless Duncanville." Thank you.
Now I'd like to ask the city secretary to swear in council member from District 4, Ms. Karen Cherry-Brown.
I, Karen Cherry-Brown
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will faithfully
that I will faithfully
execute the duties
execute the duties
of the office of council member District 4
of council member District 4
of the city of Duncanville
of the city of Duncanville
state of Texas
state of Texas
and will
and will
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
preserve
preserve
protect
protect
and defend
and defend
the constitution and laws
the constitution and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and this state
and this state
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'm like, still a little bit of what Mayor Gordon said as far as being in this role. It wasn't where I saw myself, I'm a business owner for the last 20 years, a leader for the last 30 years. And so in 2019, I decided that I was going to retire from my companies and just kind of sail through. But you know, in 2021, there was an opportunity for being the servant leader for District 4, and that's just who I am, a servant leader. And so, you know, here I am, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. It's funny, when I was talking to everybody, they were like, "Oh, you're District 4. I want to introduce myself to someone and say, you know, I'm a city council member." And they'll say, "Well, I don't live in that district, but we're all Duncanville." And so I say, "If you see my face out in the public," The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States of America...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First, praise to the big G O D. I see him move things in my life, in and out and out of the way, and things came together. Six months ago, if you would have asked me if I was going to do this, I would have said no. Five and a half months ago, I was asked to take Greg Contreras's seat, and the chance at the opportunity to serve with Greg, and I think a great council. It was something I could not pass up, and I said yes immediately. Jennifer said, are you sure? I said, yeah. She said, wait, let's talk about this. I said, no, 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 we're good, we're good. But I'm really excited about this council. I think our city manager's fantastic, and there will be no rookie hazing. So my biggest thanks goes to my wife. Jennifer's my rock, she's my views, she's my pit bull. She worked tirelessly for me. She felt all the things I didn't feel during this, and she wears her stuff on her sleeve, and you could see it. But my biggest chunk of gratitude goes to her, and I love her dearly. My kids, I want to thank them for their support. I'm not quite sure where it came from exactly. It might have been an opportunity to get me out of the house more, so they didn't have to listen to 30-minute lectures. And then the community, the outreach, the support that I received, the encouragement, the donations, the people that bled for me and bled with me, I really appreciate all of y'all. And I don't like giving speeches, so I'm going to cut it short. Thank y'all very much. Everyone up here that wants to be up here? Anyone that wants to come up here, come on up. Anybody in the back?
Sorry, we're all big fans. Great column fans.
This is your city council. Okay. We are now calling for a short recess of, let's say, 10 minutes, okay? There are light refreshments. You'll get to engage with all of your council members out in the foyer or in here, but there are going to be light refreshments over in the council briefing room, so please partake and enjoy this part of our evening. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'd like to ask the city secretary to swear in council member from District Four, Ms. Karen Cherry-Brown.
I, Karen Cherry-Brown...
I, Karen Cherry-Brown...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of council member District Four...
Of the office of council member District Four...
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And this state...
And this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm like, still a little bit of what Mayor Gordon said, as far as being in this role. It wasn't where I saw myself. I'm a business owner for the last 20 years, a leader for the last 30 years. And so in 2019, I decided that I was going to retire from my companies and just kind of sail through. But you know, in 2021, there was an opportunity for being the servant leader for District Four, and that's just who I am, a servant leader. And so, you know, here I am, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. It's funny, when I was talking to everybody, they were like, oh, you're District Four. I want to introduce myself to someone and say, you know, I'm a city council member. And they'll say, well, I don't live in that district, but we're all Duncanville. And so I say, if you see my face out in the public somewhere, even if I'm not over your district, but you see me and you have a need, I'm Karen Cherry-Brown, and I'm here to serve. And I want to thank District Four for allowing me to serve another term, so great that you stuck with me. Thank you. I'd like to ask the city secretary to do the oath of office for council member of District Five, Kyle Pennebaker.
I, Kyle Pennebaker...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the city of Duncanville...
Of the city of Duncanville...
State of Texas...
State of Texas...
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States of America...
And of this state...
And of this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
A lot of nerves up here. First, praise to the big G O D. I see him move things in my life, in and out and out of the way, and things came together. Six months ago, if you would have asked me if I was going to do this, I would have said no. Five and a half months ago, I was asked to take Greg Contreras's seat, and the chance at the opportunity to serve with Greg, and I think a great council. It was something I could not pass up, and I said yes immediately. Jennifer said, are you sure? I said, yeah. She said, wait, let's talk about this. I said, no, 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 we're good, we're good. But I'm really excited about this council. I think our city manager's fantastic, and there will be no rookie hazing. So my biggest thanks goes to my wife. Jennifer's my rock, she's my views, she's my pit bull. She worked tirelessly for me. She felt all the things I didn't feel during this, and she wears her stuff on her sleeve, and you could see it. But my biggest chunk of gratitude goes to her, and I love her dearly. My kids, I want to thank them for their support. I'm not quite sure where it came from exactly. It might have been an opportunity to get me out of the house more, so they didn't have to listen to 30-minute lectures. And then the community, the outreach, the support that I received, the encouragement, the donations, the people that bled for me and bled with me, I really appreciate all of y'all. And I don't like giving speeches, so I'm going to cut it short. Thank y'all very much. Everyone up here that wants to be up here? Anyone that wants to come up here, come on up. Anybody in the back? Last call.
Maybe get the second row over to...
Second row. Second row anymore.
Sorry, we're all big fans. Great column fans.
This is your city council. We are now calling for a short recess of, let's say, 10 minutes, okay? There are light refreshments. You'll get to engage with all of your council members out in the foyer or in here, but there are going to be light refreshments over in the council briefing room, so please partake and enjoy this part of our evening. Thank you. Okay. Now, I'd like to ask the city secretary to swear in council member from District Four, Ms. Karen Cherry-Brown.
I, Karen Cherry-Brown...
I, Karen Cherry-Brown...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the city of Duncanville...
Of the city of Duncanville...
State of Texas...
State of Texas...
And will, to the best of my ability...
And will, to the best of my ability...
Preserve...
Preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
And defend...
And defend...
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws...
Of the United States...
Of the United States...
And this state...
And this state...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm like, still a little bit of what Mayor Gordon said, as far as being in this role. It wasn't where I saw myself. I'm a business owner for the last 20 years, a leader for the last 30 years. And so in 2019, I decided that I was going to retire from my companies and just kind of sail through. But you know, in 2021, there was an opportunity for being the servant leader for District Four, and that's just who I am, a servant leader. And so, you know, here I am, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. It's funny, when I was talking to everybody, they were like, oh, you're District Four. I want to introduce myself to someone and say, you know, I'm a city council member. And they'll say, well, I don't live in that district, but we're all Duncanville. And so I say, if you see my face out in the public somewhere, even if I'm not over your district, but you see me and you have a need, I'm Karen Cherry-Brown, and I'm here to serve. And I want to thank District Four for allowing me to serve another term, so great that you stuck with me. Thank you. Hold on one second. My husband told me to open it. Always bossing me. I'd like to ask the city secretary to do the oath of office for council member of District Five, Kyle Pennebaker.
I, Kyle Pennebaker...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the office of council member District Five...
Of the city of Duncanville...
Of the city of Duncanville...
State of Texas...
Okay, so we're going right into Mayor's report?
Uh, yes, sir. It's all you.
Uh, yes. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order at this time. If everyone have their seats, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting at eight oh three P M. Our next order of business is gonna be, uh, starting with our Mayor's report. Um, I'll be brief, I just want to, uh, tell everyone about an event that occurred, well, actually, there were two events, but the, the one that we attended Sunday at Holy Spirit Catholic Church was an amazing event, we saw a lot of old friends, uh, I think Don worked with a local, um, member of that church that, uh, to celebrate the fifty year, um, anniversary, and it was, it was an amazing event, great turnout, great food, uh, weather cooperated, and it was a, a, a very worthy, um, uh, event to have in our city to honor that, uh, Holy Spirit Catholic Church, and I hope we get to do that with other churches as they reach their milestone anniversaries as well. Uh, the second thing is, we had a, uh, Arts and Commission event that included two businesses along Wheatonland, and, uh, one of them was, uh, help me out with the names now.
Pink Yolk.
Pink Yolk, Art Studio, and Takeout Burger. Um, it was very well attended, I wanna thank the, uh, members of the Arts Commission for putting that together, it really reminds us of what we could be doing very often with all of our businesses in this city, to help, uh, promote them, and to help, uh, just bring, bring people in, uh, try their wares, and see, uh, if we can improve some of the attendance in some of these stores, uh, those are both, uh, fairly well visible off of Wheatonland, um, so they probably do a fair share of, of drive-by recognition, for our other shopping centers that aren't so, uh, close to the roads, I think these type of events, uh, such as Kingsman's Coffee, uh, was also a spectacular turnout for that event, so, I'm, I'm hoping that between our, um, different boards and commissions and our Arts Commission, we can continue this, it's proven to be very, very successful, and much needed in our business community, and that would be it from me, I have, uh, lights on, I didn't see which order, so I'm gonna take, ooh, now more, I'm gonna take Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello Duncanville, City of Champions.
Hello.
Hello. I have a prepared report that I will read to you. I'm delighted to extend my heartfelt kudos to our Arts Commission for organizing a fantastic arts and business mixer. Your dedication and creativity have truly shown through, bringing our diverse and vibrant community together to celebrate and support the arts. It was inspiring to see several poets and even some Emmy Award winners right here in Duncanville. Your efforts are deeply appreciated. I also want to extend a special thank you to Takeout Burger, now under new management of Shelley Warner. Congratulations, Shelley. Extended, uh, thank you to Takeout Burger for serving some of the best chicken wings and fried ribs in town. Your culinary delights added a delicious touch to our event, and of course, a big shout-out to Pink Yolk for graciously hosting us. One characteristic I am most proud of about Duncanville is our multiculturalism. Our city is rich with diverse experiences and backgrounds, and this diversity is our superpower. It is a strength that I am eager to see us showcase to the world. We are already on the right path, as evidenced by our historic election of the first Latino mayor of the city of Duncanville, Mayor Greg Contreras. Duncanville, by electing Greg as your mayor, you have chosen a man deeply ingrained in our community. Mayor Contreras has dedicated thirty years as a city employee, with twenty-five year, twenty-five of those years as building official, overseeing code enforcement, performing health inspections, and even being unanimously appointed by the council as interim city manager from twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen, all while continuing to oversee building inspections. His extensive experience and unwavering commitment to Duncanville makes him the perfect ambassador to promote our city as open for business. Mayor Contreras is the epitome of an overachiever, he just couldn't do one milestone. Not only is he our first Latino mayor, but he also holds the distinction of being the first representative from District Five to serve as mayor. His dedication and commitment to our city are truly inspiring. Mayor Contreras, it is my honor to serve alongside you as at-large council member. I have every confidence that you will engage not only the council, but all stakeholders in your decision-making process, working tirelessly to bridge gaps between the council, the city, and our constituents. Together, we will continue to make Duncanville a shining example of unity, diversity, and excellence for such a time as this. Duncanville, I present to you our very first Latino mayor, a leader who embodies the spirit of resilience of our community. Thank you, and let's continue to celebrate and support the vibrant, diverse community that makes Duncanville the city of champions. Thank you.
Councilman Mac Burnett.
Thank you, Mayor Contreras. Hey, I, I wanna talk about the wonderful things that our staff does, it starts with the city manager, we've done really good things, and, and I really appreciate that, but, but, uh, we've, we've had things, we had a police memorial service at the Poe Hobden Amphitheater, outstanding event that, that was done, they mentioned the art mixer, uh, we had police awards banquet recently, and, and we have outstanding officers that, that really take care of us, uh, I, I gotta put in plug-in for Lions Club, a, as well, 'cause we won Burgers Bowling, and, and Business, okay, uh, and stuff, they, they asked me to be the anchor of the team, and I, I couldn't quite take 'em down enough, so, but, but, uh, in the, in this past Saturday, a- again, it's something that I see, that, that our Parks and Rec, there was a band, Forever Mac, wonderful band to have there. Uh, Sunday morning, some of us were at the Run for the Wall event, outstanding event that, that the, the American Legions put on, and it, and it has the, it's a ride, they ride from California to Washington D.C., it's honor of veterans and P.I., uh, missing in action and, and that stuff, but outstanding, quick, uh, uh, event that they have there. Uh, Holy Spirit, again, congratulations on fifty years of, of your service, again, this weekend's gonna be Fire Truck Pull, and, uh, it's, it's, it's a way that people raise money for Special Olympics, and it's, it's a wonderful thing, it started here in Duncanville, and, and hopefully it'll stay here in Duncanville. Uh, on the first, there's gonna be a band called, uh, Pure Blend, a- at the Poe Hobden Amphitheater, if you enjoy Motown, it's outstanding, there's outstanding group, uh, to, to do that, and I also just wanna simply say, congratulations to those that are here tonight, I appreciate you, look forward to working with you, thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, mention just another reason for us to be proud of our first responders, on this past Friday, they had the first annual Battle of the Badges basketball tournament, and so our, uh, police department and our fire, both police and fire had representative teams in that tournament, and, I mean, I had no idea, I, I was kinda watching them and thinking, man, you know, our boys' basket, high school basketball team better watch out, 'cause we have some, some serious talent on, uh, both the fire and the police team, so, I really enjoyed that, and we look forward to watching that event grow, because the city of Duncanville hosted that event, and there was five or six teams from, uh, other departments from other cities, and so, uh, just another reason to be proud of our first responders. And then I also wanted to mention that, uh, Doug Finch has recently closed on his house, so we do now have a city manager who lives in the city of Duncanville, for anybody, and, and so, we, we look forward to, to all the work that he's going to do with the city, and also that, you know, him and his wife are gonna be a part of this community now, and so, we're glad that they're here. Thank you.
Mr. Mac Burnett, do you have one more thing?
Thank you, Mayor Contreras, I, I do have one more thing, and also- And also, we are the city of champions, but there needs to be big recognition for our track teams, both the boys and girls, state, set records, I mean, outstanding. So and I think they're actually getting awards tonight and stuff, and unfortunately, we can't be there to do that. But city manager, I'd like it if we could somehow recognize them as well at some point in time. Thank you.
Newly seated Councilman Pennebaker.
Figure out how this stuff works. I didn't really come prepared to say anything, but I'm glad we have the opportunity. I didn't see it that I would have that. So a few months ago, I struck up a relationship with Mike Stewie Stewart at American Legion Post 81. He's with the Riders Club. And Mr. Councilman, Mac Burnett, mentioned this earlier, the Run for the Wall. And it was an event that they had, it came through Duncanville Sunday morning. And it starts in California, and it's a 10-day cross-country motorcycle ride to honor our missing in action, killed in action. And the ride goes to the Veteran Memorial in Washington DC. And it's grown, this was the 34th year, next year will be the 35th, so it's expected to be bigger. They have four routes that go across the country, and on average, there's about 400 riders in each route. And that one route comes right through Duncanville every year. I was asked to go out and see what they do in Grand Prairie, that's where they stop for the night. And they had this tremendous ceremony, it was very moving, very powerful. They had Gold Star families come up and speak at the end, and if you don't cry, you're, you know, something probably wrong with you. But what Mike Stewart was most interested in is getting Duncanville more involved. So I'll reach out and we'll see if we can get a little bit more attendance. And we talked to the fire department a little bit and the police department, and the interim chief stepped up. And we had a few council members out there, a mayor-elect out there. And the fire department brought the ladder truck. And you had this huge American flag extended over the highway with the American flag. We had a full police escort coming down I-20 under Duncanville Road. And it's awe-inspiring and moving. And, you know, I had to turn away and put my sunglasses on, because I didn't want to see my tears in my eyes. But next year's the 35th anniversary, the 35th anniversary of the ride. We're hoping to promote it a little bit more and get a little more attendance out there. It's something that you won't, you don't want to miss. And just, you know, follow me, follow the American Legion Post 81, they put that stuff all out there. So that's it, thank you.
With that, I'm going to add very quickly that I was also honored to be there, as was Councilman Mac Burnett. The amazing thing that was really the tear-jerker was, as the vehicles vehicles came by, that weren't part of the lead group, truckers and individuals in their cars, and multiple people in cars were honking and waving as they read the sign. I never saw the sign, so I'm not sure exactly what it said, but it touched so many of them. And I thought, and I also shed a tear, because I thought, how many of these people driving by have served, have served in any way, whether they were in peacetime or wartime? And they're driving under the bridge, and these truckers just laying on their horns as they were coming through. It was a sight to see, and then followed by the 300-plus motorcycle riders coming on. I'll tell you, if you ever hear about it in the future, which you will, come on out and enjoy that. It's a real all-American scene, I'll tell you that. Okay, so we're up with the city manager's report now.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. A few things, we have tentatively had scheduled a strategic council retreat workshop with Mr. Mike Conda for June 25th. However, this evening, I learned of the joint meeting with the Arts Commission for the same time, the same night. So I've got to regroup with you, and so I'll get back to you on that. But make sure your calendar is reserved for June 25th, we definitely need that night, so. Couple of other things, I want to express our appreciation to our residents. Our staff have been battling with a series of IT challenges over the last couple of weeks. We're certainly making progress, we've been able to complete a risk assessment just this past week. We had a scheduled outage that we did, and we were able to make repairs to our IT system. Our phone trees and our internet provide stability into the system. We've been able to restore VPN access, set up some new workstations in the police department, restored rec time for our residents to be able to use in registering, for instance, for the summer camp programs. And we completed configurations that were needed for our intergov transition. So the IT staff, I just want to really give them a tip of the hat. They've been doing a lot of work, a lot of long hours, weekends. And Ms. Portia Hogg is leading that, is our interim technology director, and they're really doing a good job to get us back up and going. Also want to recognize Ms. Lauren Sanchez, who has just recently been recognized with the highly esteemed North Texas Emergency Preparedness Regional Service Excellence Award, another champion employee who is just doing great things on behalf of the residents in the city. I also share with you, this morning, she hosted a complete emergency operations center training, and all of our directors of all of our departments and everything were participating in that for that what-if scenario. And so she's doing a great job. It's a little bittersweet, but I think we've shared publicly at this point. Congratulations to Assistant Police Chief Fries, who is leaving us to become the Town of Addison's new police chief. And also, speaking of folks moving on, I also just want to recognize longtime city manager Greg Porter of Cedar Hill, who has announced his retirement after 37 years of service to the city of Cedar Hill. And Mr. Porter, City Manager Porter, has been very, very helpful to me since I've been here. And so I just really want to recognize him and thank him for all that he's done. With that, Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations, which we have none this evening. So move on to item number three, citizens' input. In-person citizen comments will be heard during the regular session. In keeping with the city council's rules of procedure adopted on October 18th, 2022, electronic mail comments will no longer be read aloud. Paper copies will be provided to the city council at the dais. The comments will be made as part of the public record in the minutes. Pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research and any further action. All persons addressing are subject to council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. At this time, two-minute comments will be taken, well, we've received them already. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and make sure that as you come up after I call your name, you state your name and address for the record. So the first one I have here is Charmel Morel. Did I say that right? Okay.
530 Alabamina Avenue. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council and City Manager. I am here today on behalf of the Duncanville Tigers Youth Organization, as well as the community of Duncanville. My reason for coming and speaking today is to make you all aware that there are no training facilities or parks designated for track and field. Up until recently, we were able to train at Reed Middle School, until we were told that they were no longer able to use the track due to the school district doing maintenance this summer. And once the maintenance is completed, the tracks will be closed for school use only. Myself, as well as the other Duncanville residents, have reached out to the Parks Department, and we were given a small space at Harrington Park, which we are so greatly appreciative of. But still, there's no track. We wear spikes, we compete on tracks, not grassy areas. Most of the city parks have playgrounds, basketball courts, soccer fields, softball, baseball fields, and I'm now hearing a dog park and a skate park coming, but nothing for track and field. My 12-year-old daughter is a two-time Junior Olympian from running summer track, and also a 2024 Junior Olympic, Junior Olympic prospect. Duncanville is the city of champions, but how do we help create, raise champions if we have nowhere to practice or train? Thank you.
Next is Dan Turner. Dan Turner. We'll move on to Shirley Flynn.
Thank you, Mayor Contreras. My concern today is about the event center that we've been told. Oh, I'm supposed to say my name and my address, okay. Let's start over. Shirley Flynn, 140 Greystone Place, Duncanville, 75137. Greystone is located right at the main and Duncanville, Daniel Dale intersection. And that is where it has been proposed that an event center would be constructed. I and several other residents in the Greystone area are opposed to it for several reasons. My main reason is taxes. I don't want our taxes to go up, because we just had a reduction in the taxes, and I don't want to get that back. I don't want to give that back. Another reason is because of the noise that it would bring with all the new people coming into our neighborhoods. Another reason, the third one, that I'm really opposed to is the hours of operation, which could go well into late, late hours, and that would disturb our peace. And I've been there since 2001. That area has been vacant all those years, and I don't know what they, who brought it up, but it's fine the way it is. I don't think there's any need to start something. Even if you want to do a dog park, maybe that, I don't know. But the event center, I definitely am opposed to, as well as some of the other neighbors. I don't know where they are, I don't see any of them. Oh, that's my two minutes? Thank you.
Ruth Carlson.
Hi, my name is Ruth Carlson. I live at 822 Cheryl Boulevard, Duncanville, 716, 765116. And my claim to fame is that I'm married to Stuart Carlson, who is your grin for the day on Nextdoor. But anyway, I just, I decided to come up and thank you, Mayor Contreras, and all of the council members that we've gotten to know over the years, and our attorney also over our Texas Works Force ordinance. And we thank you that it's finally come to, hopefully today, that the decision is made. But if it hadn't been for all this, we wouldn't have gotten to know you guys, and we wouldn't have known even how to. We've been in Duncanville area since 1982, except for an eight-year stint in Nigeria as missionaries. But we wouldn't have known anything about city politics or anything, so it's been a fun journey. And I do want to say about our offering space to people who are trying to get on their feet, like coming new to Duncanville or something happened, like a divorce or something, and they need someplace to stay for a month or so. You know, the scripture in Hebrew says, "Don't forget to entertain strangers or visitors, because some have entertained angels by so doing so." So thank you very much for all your support and wisdom.
Okay, that concludes our citizen input for the evening. We'll move on now to the consent agenda, and I'll have the city secretary read the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4A, consider the minutes for the May 7th, 2024 city council regular meeting and the May 13th, 2024 special call meeting. Item 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the award of RFB 24-0017, Harrington Park and 10 Mile Lane wastewater area reroutes and improvements to Texas Standard Construction Limited through the city's competitive bid process for utility infrastructure improvement with a contract amount of $748,079.20 and an additional appropriation of $149,615.84 as a project contingency for a total amount not to exceed $897,695.40. Item 4B was on, is on individual consideration.
Thank you. Well.
Motion to approve.
If I may, just want to ask and make sure that nobody has any questions or concerns about the.
Second.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Mac Burnett, and then we have a second by whom? Mr. Pennebaker? With that, let's take a vote. Okay, the consent items pass unanimously. Now we're moving on to, we're going to get our screens back up? Just give us one second, please? Just in the event that they can't get this back up and running, does everybody have their printed copies of the agenda in front of them? Everyone on this agenda? We're going to move on in spite of the technical difficulties. Just so you'll know, our council is going to be using printed documents to be reading off. And unfortunately, unless you have a copy in your lap, the city manager will be covering these items in enough detail so that each one of you should have a pretty good idea what it is that we're, where we're going with these items. These are public hearings. So I'm going to read the first one, and then I'll let the city manager go on and give further detail. Item 5A, item for consideration, individual consideration, is to conduct a public hearing and consider, consider an ordinance granting a specific use permit for an SUP for the temporary workforce housing on Irwin Kiesler Development Redbird 5PT Lot 0006 Dunkinville, Dallas County, Texas, more commonly known as 822 Cheryl Boulevard. Shall we open the public hearing? Okay, city manager, continue, please.
All right, so thank you, Mayor. So, and I apologize to the audience. It seems when we flipped on the board there that there was some sort of glitch that seems to have knocked out the monitors. And they're working to restore that. So what I'm, what I'm working from is actually the documentation that was attached to the agenda. And so I'm just going to kind of spend probably an extra minute on each of these. They're all three, a request for temporary workforce housing. I believe you've already heard from the applicant this evening. So the first is a request for 822 Cheryl Boulevard. This is to obtain a special, a specific use permit to allow the operation of the use, temporary workforce housing on the property at 822 Cheryl Boulevard. The definition of a temporary workforce housing is a residential unit offered for rental to guests for residential purposes for a temporary work assignment contract or to attend vocational or occupational training for a period of more than 30 nights but less than six months. Such rentals may include a shared room, a single room, or the entire dwelling unit. These uses are conducted by the homeowner or the tenant, not by a hotel or other businesses. The land use designation for 822 Cheryl Boulevard is single-family residential. There were 17 mailings that were sent out. One replied in favor, zero replied in opposition. This did appear before planning and zoning and did receive an approval at an earlier meeting in May. There were recommended conditions that were recommended by Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Nathan Warren. Those recommended, recommended conditions include no loud or rocious noise may be present on the property between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. The special use permit would be removed if the location receives three substantiated complaints from neighboring property owners for excessive noise or traffic within a 24-month period. The third, that the property must continue to be in good standing by not having any outstanding issues related to taxes or code compliance provisions. The fourth, a report must be submitted to the planning staff annually that indicates the following, the number of nights the unit was rented as a temporary workforce housing in the previous year, proof of payment of hotel occupancy tax, proof of current property insurance. The fifth, the property would be suspended or removed from the registration list for one year if false or misleading information is provided. There has been, or there's been a violation of the terms, conditions, or restrictions, or if the hotel occupancy tax has not been paid in a timely manner. And then the final recommendation for conditions would be the continued operation of a specific use permit for workforce housing. Following suspension or removal from the registration list would be considered a violation of the city of Dunkinville's comprehensive zoning ordinance. And at this time, Mayor, you may wish to hear if the council had any comments or, and then open the public hearing.
Just to be clear, to ask for questions prior to the public hearing opening? Okay, so at this point, does the council have any? Okay, well, let's go ahead. And at this point, we'll open the public hearing. Time? The time is 8:39? So that was your presentation right there. So at this point, is there anyone here that wants to talk in favor of the, this particular request? Name an address, please.
Michael Sykes, 810 Cheryl Boulevard, Dunkinville, Texas, 75116. I'm in favor of it. Known the couple for many years while they were in the jury as well. So I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience here to speak in favor of this item? At that point, do we have anybody here in, here to speak in opposition of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the request before us? Okay, seeing none, we'll have, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilman Coontz. Let's vote. Okay, we didn't short anything out. Okay, all right. The motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously?
Time at.
Having all these helpers, 8:41. Is there any discussion from the council at this point? Questions? Councilman Mac Burnett?
Thank you, Mayor Contreras. City manager, can you explain to me the difference between temporary workforce housing and, and other types of, of short-term rentals or housing? Can you explain?
Sure, sure, I'll do my best. And I was, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting when this was discussed. What I would share with you is, so short-term rental, for instance, STRs are traditionally less than 30 days. What this particularly would do, and Alex, I don't know if it's asking too much, if you could go back to the definition of temporary workforce housing for me. But this specifically, here you go, here's the definition of temporary workforce housing. Where this is different than a short-term rental is this is for more than 30 days. A short-term rental would be less than 30 days, but this cannot exceed six months. So that's the biggest difference. And I certainly would defer to the city attorney if he has anything to add to that. And then a traditional, what I would say, long-term rental would be, you know, indefinite or contractually, it would be more than six months generally.
Yeah, well, one, I'll add. As we went through looking at short-term rentals in our rental registration program and our short-term rental regulations, we, we came across this use, we came across this use that was being pro-offered by the Carlsons primarily in our community. And they had really looked at addressing the possible need, especially during COVID, when we had a lot of healthcare professionals that were staying in our community. They were basically signing nurses and healthcare professionals in kind of the short-term rental mode by, and they were taking, I want to say, job assignments for anywhere from 30 to 90 days, where they would stay in our community and work in a local hospital or a local healthcare profession. And they preferred that living arrangement since they were working long hours and working strange hours, they felt comfortable. And the Carlsons, through the ownership of their homes, were fulfilling those needs. And we realized that it wasn't really a short-term rental, nor was it a long-term rental. So what we did is tried to address this. We met with them on several occasions and tried to address what they were doing. And they really are catering not to people, I think Ms. Carlson got up and said, people that may need temporary living arrangements. But it's a lot of times people that have taken job assignments or for educational purposes are living in our community. And so we tried to address it with this use. And so you tasked me to write that, or your predecessors did, predecessor council. And so we wrote this definition, tried to address this need in our community. So I hope that that kind of answers your question. It's somewhere between a traditional one-year rental and a traditional short-term rental, which is for really a different purpose. People are usually coming in because they're visitors. They're either vacationing or staying for the weekend or for a short period of time, where these members that are living in these rental units are looking at more becoming a member of the community, albeit for a short amount of time, but for longer than just a weekend or a week at a time. So we tried to address this with, so it's kind of a species of, of short-term rental than what traditionally gets addressed under the STR ordinance.
Thank you. Any further comments on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Coontz, second by Councilman Mac Burnett. And I would ask this before we move on. Would you be in agreement to add the recommendations that were stated that we have right in front of us now?
Mayor, if, well, what I interpreted the motion to approve was to approve, to approve the ordinance as written, which contains all the conditions.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Please vote. Unanimous in approval? Okay, now we're moving on to item B. Temporary workforce housing, 822 Cheryl Boulevard, conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map as heretofore amended by amending the existing SF 10, single-family dwelling residential district to grant a specific use permit to allow for temporary workforce housing on real property located on the River Oaks Block A, Lot 5, City of Dunkinville, Dallas County, Texas, more commonly known as 350 Linkley Drive. Do we have anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Oh, excuse me, let me back up. Let's go ahead and have the city manager go ahead and do a presentation on this particular request. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, thank you. And so this one is very similar to the last one. And we have the added benefit of having the monitors back. Thank you, Alex, for all your hard work and getting that restored for us here in the middle of the meeting. So this request, just like the last one, is to obtain a specific use permit for this particular address. It's the same exact situation, temporary workforce housing, no more than 30, or more than 30 days, but less than six months. You see here the location of the parcel address. Single family, no, it's not. It's a single-family seven residential district. There were 37 mailings sent out, you see, and there's the circle where all the mailings were sent out. Two replied in favor, five replied in opposition. This was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission put their own conditions on the specific use permit. And then staff is recommending the same exact conditions that they recommended from the last one. These are the recommendations by Director Warren associated with this application. So I'll skip reading these because these are the same exact conditions, but they're on the screen. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll now open the public hearing on this request at 8:49. We'll move on to ask that if anybody is here is in favor of this request, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Ruth Carlson, 822 Cheryl Boulevard, Dunkinville, Texas. This home has been in our family since 1970? Seventy or 78. It was Stuart's mom's house. And we had wanted to, well, we cared for her till she died on his 68th birthday, 2022. But we used her house as a way to make income for her care in our home. Anyway, so it has nothing to do with the long Texas workforce thing, but I am in favor of keeping this house. And it's, don't want to sell it. We bought it from the family trust. And we want to continue welcoming people who need a place to stay. The, I know that some of the opposition was actually a good classmate of my, my mother-in-law way back in their college days. And, but she's afraid that there would be like too much traffic. And we only have one car parked in that driveway of, that can take four cars. And our neighbors have far more cars and boats in that neighborhood. So I don't think ours is the problem with too much traffic. And our people are very quiet. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak in favor of the request? I see a none. Anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Motion to close the public hearing at 8:51?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Coontz, second by Councilman Mac Burnett. Let's vote. Unanimously. Unanimous to close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager, the five, we didn't have any letters of opposition in our packets. So could you provide any background on that?
Sure, so, and, and certainly we apologize about that. That was the day when we ran into some difficulty with staffing, and it happened to be the same day as the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. What I will share with you is there was some confusion about short-term rental versus workforce housing. And so I, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission with Assistant City Manager David Keyes, who did this presentation. And some of the folks that spoke that night during the planning zone, and I don't want to dismiss all the opposition, but there was clearly confusion between the short-term rental and the amount of traffic that that would generate and the parties and those types of things versus a workforce housing. And so there was considerable discussion at that meeting. All of those letters were received prior to that meeting. And then ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt favorable to move forward, that they thought a lot of those comments had been satisfied. I certainly, I can't dismiss all five of them, but there was definitely, I felt like the majority of that was confusion with short-term rentals.
Thank you. So this isn't, and I know we already talked about this with the other one, but this is for temporary workforce housing. for temporary workforce housing, not for short-term rental, not for an Airbnb-type house. This is for, we already talked about what temporary workforce housing is. I just have one other question, and probably should have asked this on the last agenda item, but I'll ask anyways. Can we, is there any way we can add a condition to where the zoning, if the current owners sell these properties, that the zoning reverts back to single-family ten?
No. The zoning goes with the property, so if it's sold, then you can sunset the ordinance and put a period of time on it, and that will generate a re-review of the SUP, which would have to go through this process again. And we've done that in the past.
Well, I'll just put this out there for fifteen-year lifespan on the SUP, and then the owners can reapply, right? If they still own the property at that point, they can reapply. And so I'll put that out there. I am in favor of this either way, but I'd feel more comfortable if, you know, after the property exchange ownership, that it could be up for review.
I will say, I hope I'm not here in fifteen years in this seat. Of course, last time I said that, here I am. So if you want to, that's fifteen years, or you may want to. I don't want to suggest that the Carlsons are not going to be with us in fifteen years, nor do I want to suggest that they may not be wanting to do this in fifteen years. I would rather see us, if we're going to do that kind of thing, put a shorter period of time on that. And then if you want to waive the fee or do some other things, you can instruct the manager's office to do what you think's appropriate there, but I would recommend you do a shorter period of time.
Could we ask the property owners how they feel about ten years?
Okay. You closed the public hearing, but it's okay to ask a question if it's directed at the applicant.
Okay. Would you mind coming back to the podium, please?
Excuse me, when we were doing the Airbnb SUP, I believe that one, if somebody sells their property, the SUP terminates. Is that correct?
No.
My bad. I thought it did.
No.
That was what we understood.
It's zoning.
I would be more comfortable with, if we sell it, if it changes hands, do that.
I know you'd be more comfortable, but the judge would not be more comfortable.
I just met him tonight.
Yeah, not that judge. It's a problem that I can't put a sunset provision on the ordinance without, and it shouldn't, because it's zoning, it goes with the property. I can do a sunset time, but I still have to go back through the zoning process to remove the SUP. It's not self-executing, because it's an ordinance.
You know, I want to say, because again, I'm very much in support of this, because there is a need with nurses and medical personnel, people in missionary roles, and so there's definitely a need for this. I've been in one or two of these houses, and I mean, you know, if I were passing through, I'd want to live there. But I do have a concern about if the property were to exchange ownership and not knowing whether or not the next property owner would take advantage of what they know to be the conditions on the property. So that's only the only reason I'm putting that out there.
I have a concern about.
They can only ask you a question because the public hearing is closed.
So I guess my question is, how do you, as property owners, would you be okay with putting a ten-year, and then you would come back, if you still owned it in ten years, and just, I guess, apply for, reapply?
Or if they wanted, I understand the sell thing, that's our problem. If we put, their problem is, they still may want to do this in ten years, they could always come back.
Just hoping it won't be a three-year process.
No, it shouldn't be. I mean, if the ordinance is, if the ordinance is, we had to create this ordinance in order to accommodate this kind of use, and that took time, so.
Mr. Coontz, let me, let me ask for some clarity, because you're using the term, you want to put that out there. Are you actually asking us to?
No, I'm not, yeah, I haven't moved to approve with that condition. So I mean, if it sounds like the council's not in favor of it, I won't even make the motion, but I'm going to approve, vote to approve either way.
We have, we have two other council members ready to make comments, so let's see if any of it connects with what you're saying. Councilman Cherry?
Actually, my comment was just that somebody that traveled for like seventeen years, looking for housing, and, because I don't like standing hotels, and still having staff that running the issues when they're trying to find housing, because like you said, as far as trying to sleep and stuff, so I just wanted to say, I appreciate the fact that you all are making this available, because it is hard working in healthcare, there's a shortage, so they have to travel to fill the needs for hospitals. So I just wanted to say, you know, thank you. And when you're working in healthcare around the clock like that, you're not trying to party, you're trying to work, go to sleep. So thank you.
Councilman Gooden?
Thank you, Mayor Contreras. So I will first start with a comment. I went and drove the area of all three properties yesterday, and you're right about the parking in the neighborhood, it's already a pretty dense neighborhood, and I didn't see anything that would indicate a major change to that. So my question is, how is it managed when it's occupied? I didn't see any issues while I was there, so.
We manage it. We have access to the house at all times. We don't, each person has their own key to their room, but we clean the common areas, we keep the, he loves to mow the yards, his exercise program, and we just take care of it. And if they call us, you know, we're over there to help do whatever needs to be done, unclog a drain or whatever, we're there.
Okay. Got a motion and a second?
Yes, I can move to approve the SUP as it is before, but with the addition of a ten-year
Second.
Second to that?
Second.
Okay. A motion by Councilman Coontz, second by Councilman Mac Burnett. Any discussion? Okay, and once again, could you repeat your motion regarding the conditions?
That the property would have to renew the SUP after, after ten years.
Okay. With that, let's go ahead and vote.
Mayor, just for the record, that would include the conditions that are currently in the ordinance with the additional condition as stated by Mr. Coontz, that it requires a renewal at the end of ten years.
Everybody got that? All right. Okay, now we're going to open the public hearing on temporary workforce housing at 103 South Capri Drive at 9:03?
Sure, so since it's the same exact presentation, it's odd that we have a situation where it's literally all three of the same exact situations. So I know you want to get to the public hearing, I'll forego this. This is the zoning chart here, single-family residential. You had nineteen mailings sent out, one in opposition, zero in favor, and the same recommended conditions. So I'll let you get to the public hearing.
Okay. We'll begin by asking if anyone in the audience is here to speak in favor of this request.
Public hearing is open at 9:05, correct? Thank you.
Got it? Okay. We'll open the public hearing at 9:05. And with that, do we have anybody here in favor of this request? Okay. I still ask the question, anybody that wants to?
Mayor, what I'll say is that the Carlsons have spoke on the other two items, and I would ask that their comments on that, on this open hearing session be included in the record as their comments as the previous two.
Appreciate that, just want to make sure somebody else doesn't have an itch to come up and talk about this, so. And along with that, anyone here that is opposed to this particular request? Anyone in opposition to this request? Seeing none? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilman Coontz. Let's vote. We've now closed the public hearing.
At 9:06?
9:05.
9:06. I saw the hand move on the clock.
Any discussion? Counsel? Councilman Coontz?
Move to approve, also with the ten-year renewal.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Councilman Coontz, second by Councilman Mac Burnett. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just for the record, that would include all the conditions that are contained in the ordinance, as well as the condition as stated by Mr. Coontz in his motion.
So noted. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, we have moved item 4B to individual consideration, item D. Yeah. That item is considered resolution approving a property transfer agreement between the City of Duncanville and the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation for the purpose of economic development activities. Councilman Coontz, I think you requested to move that to individual consideration?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
I do, and, you know, primarily, I guess, is the concern, and I guess, no, I've talked to the city manager a little bit about this, but a little bit more information to be provided about whether or not the council and the public will have the opportunity to review any proposed purchases, and in particular, the Toyota, Toyota property. So for example, the property further south on Cockro Hill there, you know, we see kind of what's being proposed there, and I believe that's in harmony with, you know, some of the improvements we'd like to see of the area. I believe that's consistent with our comprehensive plan. But I have some concerns about any, moving forward with any projects on the other property, where the public may not have the best opportunity to know what may or may not be happening with that property. So that's my primary concern, so I know the city manager wouldn't mind speaking a little bit to that.
Yes.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Coontz. So there's a couple of things here. I mean, one of the things I guess I would ask the council to consider is, we don't currently regulate who can own property in the City of Duncanville and who can't, right? But we do approve projects for development. So the council and the DCEDC, any proposed action at all with the property, in terms of development of the property, the DCEDC would recommend a proposal that would come to the council, and then the council would absolutely have the ability to approve that or not approve that. We could certainly have the public hearings and that sort of thing. What we're really talking about is just the transfer of title, just the use of the property. Now, the one thing is, I was looking back through, after our briefing, I was going back through to refresh my memory about the proposed agreement, and specifically number four in the agreement says, "Failure to use property." And so it says, and I apologize, I just can't share this on the screen, but this is, council, in your attachments, "In the event the DCEDC fails to use the property in furtherance of the economic development activities, or fails to act within a reasonable time as determined by the city, the city may, upon written notice to the DCEDC, terminate this agreement and require that the DCEDC transfer its interest in the property back to the city. The DCEDC will transfer its interest to the city within ninety days of receipt of city's written notice." So there is a little bit of a fail-safe in there for council if need be, but again, really what we're talking about is just step one. We're not talking about development, we're talking about the sale of the property from the Duncanville Community Economic Development Corporation to an entity that is going to then put the property back on the tax rolls and be paying taxes for it. And then that entity would have to make application for the development, and obviously the council would have full ability to make any decision at once in terms of that application. The other thing I'll just share with the entire council, and Councilmember Coontz and I had a chance to mention this briefly, specifically about the, what's referred to as the Toyota property or 730 East I-20, is my understanding that the DCEDC was actually the entity that purchased the property many, many years ago, but for whatever reason, when the titling was done, it was titled in the city's name and not the DCEDC's name, but we were able to verify that the DCEDC funds were actually used for the purchase of that property. So I don't know if that has any sway, but I certainly understand what you're saying about the development of the parcel, and the council will absolutely have every ability to weigh in on the development of the parcel, but not necessarily on who is purchasing it from the DCEDC. Hope that helps a little bit.
I have some other comments, but I'll wait and let other council members speak first.
We don't have any lights on right now, so you may continue.
Okay, so it's all me? So what I'm hearing is that they can sell the property without public review, or, and I'm saying public review because I know their meetings are public as well, but it's, you know, they're not directly accountable to the public, we are. And so they can sell that property to a developer who wants to do whatever they want to do without council approval.
Right, they'd be able to sell, but the developer wouldn't actually be able to break ground or do anything until they come to the council and get approval, right? So if, if a developer wants to purchase the property and decide that they want to do whatever, they're going to have to still come to the council and get approval for
So we get authority from this, for this form, Chapter 253, Local Government Code?
Yes, they change the government code. The city can only sell the property if they take bids, that's the general rule, there are exceptions. One is to use the EDC, in this case, to transfer property to basically a nonprofit corporation for them to engage in economic development in the community. That was specifically recognized in this last legislative session, so that's what you're taking advantage of now. You have requirements in the bylaws before the DCEDC does anything that has to come back here, it has to be approved. Economic development grant, any kind of use of the sales tax, has to come back to this council. So if you sell this property to me, which you're not going to, because I'm not going to buy it, you would have to get their approval at the board, and then that resolution has to come back here for you to. for you to approve what they do. So, you're in essence going to see it again anyhow.
Okay, so, sorry, yeah, because you just said, so, Ms. Finch said that they can sell it without us having to review it. You're saying...
Well, the way that the bylaws have been written is that before they take any action, it has to come back here, and the manager has to have authority to sign off on the agreement. I've been after you to change that for years, but...
I'm confused, so...
I'm confused, because the bylaws require here, only here, that that takes place. It's not required under state law, it's a bylaw thing that you have traditionally done before any money spent or any contract. If you go back and look at contracts, which even predate me, sitting in this chair, they're signed off on by the city manager, and the only reason the city manager can sign off on them is if they come here and this council directs them to.
So, I guess, so, and this is just a scenario, so...
Not required under state law, it's separate corporations. So, once I sell it to the separate corporation, they in fact could sell this property under state law. It's the local bylaw that we've adopted that requires things to come back for the DCEDC to approve, which causes lots of problems for us, and it has over the years.
So, if somebody offers to purchase a property for fifty million dollars to build a prison there, we still have to, even if the EDC...
I don't know how that's economic development.
Well, but even if they decided to move forward with something, we would still be required to...
And who appoints those people and serve at your pleasure? You do. I've had that happen too, not here, but I've had that happen, where they went out and decided they were going to buy three hundred acres of property and before, and didn't tell the council about it and spend the money. The council called a meeting and fired them all. I mean, you appoint them all and they serve at your pleasure. So, to that extent, you do have review of it. I would think that the city manager would keep us apprised of any prospect as far as economic development in the community. And a developer, if he needs zoning approval and development approval, is not going to lay down his cash hoping that you will approve what he's going to do with that property. It just doesn't happen. Those people have conditional sales contracts, and if that development doesn't get approved, then the sale doesn't go through. So, there's plenty of opportunity for the council to have superintendent control over the property. And ultimately, under law, the EDC holds the property in trust for the city. So, I can't imagine this city manager not keeping you apprised of what's going on with piece of property, even if it's sold ultimately to the EDC.
Councilman Coontz, I know we're not finished with that discussion. I think Ms. Gooden may have something that she wants to interject, if you will.
Thank you. So, I want to get clarity. Because of the bylaws, DC, if we give it to DCEDC, they can't make any decision on somebody purchasing the property without coming to us first for us to give them...
The way it requires, they can enter into an economic development deal, which is what they would have to enter into to sell them the property. And in doing that, it requires approval by us because there's always a signature line for the city manager to sign the agreement. City manager can only sign an agreement when he's authorized by this council to do so.
Okay, so, that takes care of that caveat, but you said we're the only city with that type of bylaw currently that you can think of?
Yes, that I represent, yes, ma'am.
That you represent. So, DCEDC, they are for, as their names say, economic development. And most of the times when they enter into an agreement with a developer purchaser, it is for the purpose of developing and enhancing our economics here in the City of Duncanville, correct?
Yes, they have done recreational projects as well. That's where the community part comes in. There was a Type B corporation one time, very early on. It was part of the reason it was formed is to create sales tax money for community development, as well as economic development. And community development meant recreational development, like the fieldhouse, like the parks, like the library, and those kinds of things. Well, they can't do the library under Type B, but...
I'm just asking, because I would hope that any decision that they make, if we are to move forward with this, would be for the best and highest, best possible use of the property that would benefit the City of Duncanville. But, city manager, you sit in on those meetings as well, and you have some type of influence on decisions that are made by the ED, DCEDC, as far as who they possibly may be considering selling the property to, and if it's not in our benefit, you would speak up on that.
And there's all opportunity, if I'm going to spend fifty million dollars to buy that tract of land, and I know that I've got to come to the seven of you and get you to approve the site plan and the zoning and all the things that have to take place for me to buy that property, I am not going to buy that property until that's written on an ordinance. And so, you're going to see it before it happens.
Thank you.
And so, I think with those safeguards, and these people serve at your pleasure and are accountable to you in whatever they do. So, and I would hope that you would impart to them your desires and dreams and expectations for that property. So, you've got superintendent control over that, because you appoint all those people. The common link is obviously the manager's office and the economic development director. We perform all the administrative services for that body and board, so we've always got a staff member present. And I cannot think of one time in this town that the EDC has ever done anything that y'all didn't know about. I know, one of Mr. Pennebaker's longtime predecessors had issues with the EDC, but it was always the manager's office and this body ultimately can control those decisions. And that's the way it's set up. Everything they do, they're doing for the benefit of the city. If they're not, then you need new people there.
Okay, I see, at this point, I see Mr. Coontz's light on, but before we go to Mr. Coontz, I think the city manager has a comment.
Yeah, if I could, and I want to go back to the city attorney a quick second. So, Councilmember Gooden answered your question. So, the city manager serves as the chief administrative officer for the DCEDC. So, yes, I am very, very involved with the DCEDC. And what we are trying to do is really to foster that relationship between the DCEDC and giving them some ability to help us develop the community, but also have them turn around and invest the funds, as we've been talking about. But this really underscores the importance of the comprehensive plan, right? Because they're not going to do something that's outside of the comprehensive plan. And so, that's where we really need to really make sure that that's done ahead of time. And to the city attorney's point, I mean, nobody in their right mind is going to spend any money unless they think that there's a good shot that they're going to develop it. But I want to go back to the city attorney, just to ask a quick question. So, Attorney Hager, Section eight of the bylaws is contracts for service. I'm just wanting for clarification, is that the point you're referring to? Because it says, "The corporation may, with the approval of city council, contract with any qualified and appropriate person, association, corporate, corporation, or government entity to perform and discharge designated task which will aid or assist the board in the performance of its duty. However, no such contract shall be approved or entered into which seeks to attempt to divest the board of its discretion policymaking." And then it goes in a little bit further and talks about the direction of council, because that's the only really section I could see in the bylaws that might pertain specifically to that. Is that the portion where we're saying?
I think that's been broadly interpreted, and the political will of the council was they wanted to see everything, and it's been taken back to them, and that's what they've done. And if that needs to change, it needs to change specifically by an amendment to the bylaws. I'm not arguing with you, I'm telling you what has been done. Maybe over my protestation, but that's what's been done, and that's how it's been executed. And that worries me, if there's any conflict between the words and how we operate and the words you operate, then in effect, become changes to that, because it's been accepted by everybody.
Councilman Coontz?
Thank you, Mayor, and I hope that no one misunderstands. I would really enjoy seeing something done with this property. And, but it's, you know, it's not in my district, it's actually in District Five, but it's, borders right along my district, and quite a few people have expressed what they would absolutely not like to see happen with that property. And again, my just general concern is that, and it's not due to mistrust of the EDC, it's just that I would hate to see that it would be sold at the, you know, somebody comes along with a great price and they sell it, and it ends up becoming something that the community or the neighborhood doesn't want, or something that, you know, the city manager just mentioned, our comprehensive plan that we're about to do the five-year review on. And, you know, I'm not sure, that property's not in an opportunity area, but, you know, we might need to review the comprehensive plan first. And then also, you know, I went back to the recommendations because we did have the MRB study done, and one of the recommendations was for existing portfolio of parcels and for any future acquisitions, that the city should issue a developer RFP that clearly lays forth the vision of the city for future development on subject properties. And so, have we put out an RFP for this property yet? And what was the response?
Yeah, so, Councilmember Coontz, we have not issued RFPs for either one of the properties in question. It's my understanding, the discussions with the one potential purchaser for the Cockrell Hill parcel, that that's been going on for a year or so. The, we have two potential purchasers interested in the parcel, from what I understand, on the I-20. From what I understand, generally speaking, the council has given the direction, they would like to see a hotel, they would like to see family-style restaurant. And I believe both of the, and it's been described to me about a conversation, I guess, that was held at the retreat last year, and I just apologize because I wasn't there. But both of the developers I know that are interested in the parcel are both interested in doing something along that lines. They're not looking to build something, you know, as the attorney was saying, there's really no point in them building something that they're not going to get approval to do. But, you know, I think right now, what, where the interest lies with both parties is they're both under a time crunch, one because of a national franchise situation where they're looking to get something under contract so that they can then begin the design engineering phase, and then that process. And that's specifically in regard to the one on Cockrell Hill. If we don't act, you know, and I'm not trying to put pressure on anybody, but I'm just telling you what they're telling us, if we don't act soon, they'll have to start looking at other parcels. The I-20 parcel, we have an offer right now that's good through May 30th. Whether or not they would extend that, I don't know.
So, no RFPs on the I-20 parcel? And again, this is why I asked in the briefing if we had to accept both of these at the same time, because the one at 727 Cockrell Hill, that one, we see, you know, they're going to sell it, and who's, what they're wanting to do with it when they get it, and that's something I believe most of us support. And so, again, I'm not getting a good feeling about... I would hate, again, for the public to come back and say, hey, why did y'all decide to put XYZ there? And we have to say, well, the decision was out of our hands. The only, I just have one more question, city attorney, because I was looking at Section 253, and it... For Conveyance Economic Development Corporation, it says this section applies only to municipalities with a population of twenty thousand or less? No, I'm looking at it right now, so Section 253? Okay. Yeah. Well, I just pulled it up just now, so I... Okay, well, it's all... Okay, well, I understand that. So, I'll just put it out there then, so, at least what I'm looking at, it says that this, "For conveyance to an economic development corporation, it's for municipality with twenty thousand or less." And then, "For conveyance to a nonprofit corporation, it requires the property to be used for public use." And so, I'll just put that out there, so I don't know if we can do this or not.
Let me go ahead, Mr. Pennebaker's lights on. Mr. Pennebaker?
I understand Councilman Coontz's concerns around this, and it's right next to your district, so I know where you're coming from. Me personally, I've looked at some of this. I feel confident and comfortable with the safeguards we have in place, that it will come back before council. And I feel very confident as council, for one, that we will do the right thing, and I'd like to move for approval.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion for approval on item D, 5D, by Councilman Pennebaker, and a second by Councilman MacBurnett. Any more discussion? Then let's vote. Okay, we have six in favor and one in opposition. The motion passes. Can we move on to staff and board reports? And I believe we have interim police chief Matt Stogner. Give him Police Department monthly report.
Thank you. So, good evening, mayor, council. This is for our second quarter, which is January through March. And then, I'll update you, because there's some numbers in here, and I'll let you know where we're at today as well. That way, it's a little easier to understand. Our staffing, obviously, we've had, or been dealing with vacancies lately. We are digging out of that hole. Our officers, Garcia, Vasquez, and Gomez, they have recently completed their field training, and both or all three are assigned to a patrol shift. Our civil service test, which was held in February 10th, there were currently, again, this is back then, eight applicants in the background investigation. We have since exhausted that list. And what I mean by exhausted, we've either hired the individuals off the list or we've rejected them based on different things in our hiring guidelines. From that list, we've hired four. They're going to start the police academy. None of them are currently certified. They're starting the police academy July 1st. They'll graduate sometime in December, so you can see kind of where we're at. And it'll be summer of next year before their effective staffing. We have a test scheduled for June 8th. And this test, well, I'm sorry, the February 10th test was before we got the lateral bonus. So, with that, we have 184 applications for our June 8th test and 13 T-CO certified officers, and we're still reaching out trying to recruit those individuals as well. We currently have seven vacancies, I'm sorry, we have six. Once Assistant Chief Freese leaves June 5th, we'll move back up to seven vacancies. Once Assistant Chief Freese leaves June 5th, we'll move back up to seven vacancies. This is a, this is, this has been a long time coming, but I'm certainly very proud to say that our department received an agency award for all of our command staff having graduated the FBI Elite Trilogy course. It's three different weeks. It begins with supervision, command, and then executive. It's an agency trilogy award. I believe they're going to come out and give us our certificate at our next meeting. And what that is, it's all of our command staff, including the chiefs, going through this training. Our regional care team, and of course, you guys know Officer Hernandez, he is a extremely passionate about this. He's obtained 40 new clients during this period, four voluntary assessments, 15 actively engaged clients, which is really good. He has 15 different people that we're not having to deal with in patrol. He is providing these services to them outside of our patrol officers. We are seeing an increase in referrals from the community as well as our officers. Our officers are really good about referring these individuals to the care team and, and them providing services to them. Our patrol activity through January and March, there's a comparison there at the top. We have 2,400 traffic stops. You can see those increased along with our calls for service compared to the same time last year. The top five cited violations. I fixed this today. We've had some issues obtaining that data, and I was able to run it this morning and added this in there to, or for you all. So our top cited citation for January and March was for no insurance, and then no driver's license, expired registration, speeding, and then the nuisance trash and debris. And I think that one, the 28, is a combination of us and neighborhood services. Our citizens on patrol, they obviously go out and do our report cards. They have certainly hit Costco pretty good, which is helping. They have had a, in March, a 94% pass rate. So these are the locations we are moving to. We partnered with Hilton, we'll be doing Hilton soon, and we're going to hit other hotels in the area as well to ensure education is the key here, and what they need to do to help us prevent these from happening. Our department activity, response to resistance, we've had six incidents, all found to be lawful and within our departmental policy. We've had one vehicle pursuit, again, within our guidelines, and we're lawful, and two internal complaints, I'm sorry, one internal and one external, both were sustained. Our community engagement, Officer Arias does a really good job with this. And you can see, we've had some coffee with Cos. McDonald's is a very good partner with us on that. The Conches with the cop, they're in the top middle. But these are different meetings that we've had and partnerships that we were able to garner off these community engagement initiatives. Our neighbors' Group A offenses from January to March of 2024, I'll leave this up just for a second so you guys can look at it or look through it. There's a lot there. And then you have a Group A offenses, which are these, comparison with our best Southwest partners, of course, Cedar Hill, DeSoto, Dunkin', and Lancaster, and you have January, February, and March in each of the categories. January, these are our major crimes in each council district for January. And then for March. And with that, if you guys have any questions?
Look like it.
Awesome, thank you.
For your report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there we go. I don't have a question really, I just wanted to make a comment during our campaign, when we were going through the neighborhood and we knocked on upwards of 500 doors, and every time someone brought up police, they would say, well, I got to say something about police. And you hesitate because you're not sure what's coming. Each and every time, it was support and appreciation. So you, your department has a tremendous amount of support in District 5 and a lot of appreciation. I didn't hear one single person have any issue or complaints. You've got a lot of support over there.
Well, that's, that's always good to hear, and I'll tell you, you guys are very good stewards of supporting us too, and it's, that's where it becomes public. So y'all's support certainly helps with that and the public as well. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? With that, this concludes all our items on our agenda. We stand adjourned at 9:39. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
You don't have to go to the edges of DFW to find new business opportunities. There's a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access, and it's waiting for you.
Duncanville, the city of champions, is open for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine, and we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs, the city of Duncanville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between, there's